Okay, good evening, everybody. It being a few minutes past 6:00 PM on Tuesday, April 27th, 2021. I'm calling to order this meeting of the Westboro Board of Selectmen being held remotely. I will start out by, as we're still doing this remotely, reading the governor's orders. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Westboro Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so by Westboro TV's online platforms, youtube.com/WestboroTV and/or westbrotv.org. You may also watch via the following cable channels on Charter, Channel 192, and Verizon 28. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but for every effort, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time by technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town of Westboro's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. And so with that, we are called to order. First item on our agenda this evening is open forum, but I don't believe we have anyone registered for open forum. We do have someone who asked to speak with respect to the discussion about aerial mosquito spraying program with the Board of Health. And so we made a decision that, using my discretion as chair, that will allow her to speak at that point in time in the agenda, it'll flow a little better. Okay, so with that, open forum out of the way, we move on to item three, which is the Town Manager's Report. Kristi, the floor is yours.
Okay. Apologize, I'm having trouble finding my screen. So, an update, I spoke with Julie Squires, who's Chair of the Active Transportation and Safety Committee, and they're finalizing the feasibility study, plan to make a presentation to the board regarding the multi-use trail. And they're also requesting that the board allow them to, negotiation of easements begin again, so that will be part of the discussion when they come before you. I've also been working with Peter Dunbeck and the Department Heads who are related to the Climate Action Plan, so that once it's approved, we've already identified some items that we can immediately work through, and we'll be discussing that at the Stanley Westboro meeting on May 3rd, so Monday. Information Technology, they're doing annual cybersecurity awareness training. The library is now open Monday through Thursday from 9:00 to 7:00, and Saturday 10:00 to 3:00, and they have some restrictions in place. Their circulation supervisor, Dan Barber, is leaving at the end of the month for a new position in Concord. The Friends of the Westboro Library will be holding the outdoor book sale on the library lawn on May 1st from 10:00 to 3:00. The Recreation Department has partnered with Westboro Connects to bring the Second Annual Westboro Unplugs Week, which is next week, May 3rd to May 9th. The Town Clerk has given sort of a listing of things that are going on in her office, including processing the census, dog licenses, death, birth, and marriage records, and preparing for the street listing. Youth and Family Services has done the initial outreach of Westboro trainings that have been scheduled. These trains are targeted toward high-risk groups and are designed to promote emotional resiliency in the face of the pandemic. The Youth Commission is also seeking youth applicants for two terms beginning in the fall of 2021. These are students that are beginning their junior year of high school. And then they're also working with Westboro Public Schools with Square, N-Square One. They hosted a panel by young adult alumni of WH, of Westboro High School, who spoke about their experience around mental health and health-seeking, and that can be viewed on Westboro TV.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions from the board? Oh, Ian?
Sorry, Kristi, just back on the first one, I know there's been a number of emails that we received regarding that feasibility study from members of that committee. So I saw this, I was actually pleased because some of the emails expressed concern that it would never get done, but I'm assuming in your discussions with Julie that this, things are improving and we'll be seeing it sometime soon, but what you said, is that accurate?
Yeah, I'm aware that there's some emails that I have not been on, but in terms of my discussions with Julie and the letter that she had previously sent to the board regarding the easement process, you know, we talked about the importance of having a follow-up presentation to the board, because it's been so long, and also they've done some really good work to improve the study, and then talked through what the easement process would look like, and we would, you know, discuss that with the board, because as some of you may know, the board had paused the easement process waiting for the completion of the feasibility study.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, if nothing further with respect to the Town Manager's Report, the next item on our agenda is the site plan presentation for the proposed development at 1200 to 400 West Park Drive. And so I will invite Steve Madhouse, hopefully I got the name pronounced correctly, to unmute, introduce himself, and if there are others with him here for the presentation to answer questions, if he can introduce them as well.
Okay, there are quite a few, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Stephen Madhouse of Myrick O'Connell with offices in Worcester, Boston, and most importantly, Westboro, here this evening on behalf of Mass. General Brigham for a proposed development along West Park Drive. I'm sure the board is familiar with this site. We are here tonight as required by Section 1244 of the Town Zoning Bylaw, which requires a pre-meeting, if you will, with the Board of Selectmen prior to our meeting with the Town's Planning Board for site plan review, and that is scheduled for May 4th, next Tuesday. With me this evening are most of the members of the project team, including representatives of Mass. General Brigham, of course, and representatives of VHB, the site engineers, representatives of Gensler, the project architect, and I see the landscape architect is with us as well. And so, interesting time, Mr. Chairman, I'll just move on to the site location, and I'm sure the board is familiar with this site along West Park Drive in the Westboro Office Park. Our site is to the right here, which on the left side is the new Olympus building. Our site is on the right at 1400 and portions of 1200 West Park Drive, so it'll have a rather prominent location at Interstate 495 overlooking that interchange. Next slide, please, relative to the project overview. So the proposal is to construct a three-story medical office building with associated parking and site improvements. Relative to zoning, the property is located in the general industrial zoning district and the industrial ID overlay district, which the Board of Selectmen may be aware, there were amendments adopted to the zoning bylaw that formerly the overlay district required a special permit, but the amendments approved by Town Meeting in 2019 allowed for as-of-right developments under those dimensional controls. So this project is proceeding pursuant to the overlay district. The use is allowed as of right in the industrial overlay district, because the dimensional requirements are favorable for the site, the project meets the dimensional requirements. We don't need any relief, no special permits, no variances. However, as you're aware, as I mentioned, we're going to be before the Planning Board for site plan review. So this is our presentation to the Board of Selectmen, so you can provide your comments to the Planning Board. And now I will turn it over to Mr. John Fernandez, who is President of Mass. Massachusetts Aineer and a member of the Mass. General Brigham team, to give you an overview of what's going to occur inside the building.
He needs to unmute.
Yeah, you're on mute, John.
Yep, thank you, sorry about that. Thank you, Steve, and thank Select, the Selectmen for taking the time to listen to us. I also serve as the President of Mass. General Brigham Integrated Care, which is the organization that is applying for the DONs and run these sites as part of Mass. General Brigham. And we plan to provide a comprehensive integrated care from primary care, and at every site we'll have primary care and behavioral health in a series of specialties, as well as ambulatory surgery and imaging, including MRI and CT. We will be providing care closer to home, which we think is very important and part of the future. There are already about 40,000 existing Mass. General Brigham patients living in the Westboro area. We also plan to provide these services at a lower cost because it'll be in a non-hospital setting. And very important to me is that we do this in a way that it's, we have less fragmented care, more coordinated and integrated care, ranging from preventative as well as specialty care and treatments. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Howard Mosher from VHB, one of our consultants. Howard?
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Howard Mosher from VHB with offices in Worcester, Boston, and not Westboro, but Watertown. Just again, to reinforce the site location, we're near the interchange of Route 9 and 495, adjacent to the Olympus lot and development that you see on the left side of the screen. The site is currently a 9.4 acre undeveloped parcel with access to and from West Park Drive firmly in the middle of the Westboro Business Park. This was designated a priority development site by the vote of the Town Meeting in 2018, and basically represents the next phase of the master plan. Next slide, please. So, we're going to hit you with a couple different images, and when you saw the renderings earlier, you may have seen some notions of solar canopies. The project, I'll talk about a little bit further, but what you're seeing here is a site plan as if the solar PV canopies don't exist, so you can get a sense of the parking arrangements. But this is a 62,000 square foot medical office building. The site plan contains 315 parking spaces. To develop this site, we'll be constructing an entry driveway, bringing you up to the front door. I think you've already seen a little bit of a rendering of the front door view, and patients would be able to park in the front, and staff parking would be available in the rear. And we're going to show you some images of some amenity terraces and landscaped areas adjacent to the building. You'll see on the left side of the rendered image, there's some white lines, those are walking trails that patients and staff would be able to use during the day and during business hours. And just a point of reference is that the traffic generation is overdevelopment. It fits within the Westboro Business Park's master plan, and has been studied extensively as the development of the business park is proceeded. Next slide, please. So, flipping back, we've introduced an image that shows the solar canopies. This is a big step forward into reducing fossil fuel dependency, and these canopies will extend over the parking areas. One of the benefits is we'll capture the energy, and we won't transfer that heat into the pavements, and it's a little less snow removal for patients and staff. Under these canopies, we will have stormwater bio swales, which will help mitigate any stormwater runoff before it enters into our subsurface treatment and management systems. An additional low-impact design feature that the project will be incorporated is a series of geothermal heating and cooling systems, primarily in the rear of the building. These are wells that are below grade and allow the building to take advantage of the properties of the earth to reduce heating and cooling demands. And further, the project will be including electric vehicle station, electric vehicle charging stations for both staff and visitors. Next slide, please. So, we're pretty proud of the landscape in the public realm. This is a view of the terrace that will exist to the west of the building, or the left side, as you've seen the images. And in addition to our front door experience, which is going to be a welcoming experience with a welcome mat, you can see that the terrace is going to provide for a layered plant community of canopy trees, shrubs, perennials, and ground covers, which will allow for both patients and staff to have a moment of respite, you know, as they get through their busy days and undergo their appointments. To the extent that the utility companies will allow us, we'll be providing vegetative screening of the utilities and mechanical equipment. And one important thing, this being a medical office building, is we're going to provide visual connections to the natures through the materials and bring light to these spaces to the extent practical. The primary will be in the public spaces in the building, obviously, the patient rooms and the treatment areas will not have windows looking in and out, but where possible, we're focusing the visual connections to nature through the glazing of the windows. Next slide, please. So this is a view of the other terrace on the east side, just to get a representation of some scale and some spaces available for patients and visitors or those waiting for people to get their care. And I'm going to turn it over to John, back to John, for a little summary of the community benefits.
Thanks. So of course, the most important thing we do here is provide great healthcare and integrated care to the residents of this area, but we also, as you can see from this slide, will create a lot of jobs, both construction jobs and good healthcare jobs, and we hope that it'll also bolster the local economy, and as we do in all of our communities, there'll be a pilot agreement that we are already working on, if not close to done. And next slide. So this is the timeline, when we plan to move things along at pace here, and we look forward to working with you and answering any of your questions.
Okay, great, thank you very much. I'll open this up to questions from the board. Ian, your hand was up first.
Great, thank you, and thank you for the presentation, and the pictures as well. It's definitely visually appealing, so much appreciated. Just a couple of questions that I had. On the trail layout that you talked about in there, will that be, I know that there's a trail system within the, within the office park, will those be linked into that trail system for usage by others, or is it just for that property?
Good evening, this is Howard Mosher again, just waiting to see if someone's going to respond. We're thinking that this connection won't be made per se exactly to it, but there will be a driveway connection along our frontage driveway, which will connect to that trail, so people could make it a longer network if need be, and we've been working with the master developer to try to create those links. But, you know, these trails themselves are more of an onsite feature, but they would connect to a larger network ultimately, but just not a direct connection, just by virtue of the site location.
Great, thank you.
Well, if I could just ask a follow-up to Ian's question, so if people are riding their bicycle on the trail that's through the park and being constructed through the business park, they would be able to turn off that trail onto your property and, you know, pull up to the bike racks near the front door?
It's quite a hill to climb, I will say that. If you're familiar with the site, you know there's probably 20, at least 20 feet of grade change from West Park Drive up to the driveway. I think that we hadn't contemplated that exact question, and we'd be prepared to give you a better answer, but I don't think there's any gates that are going to go up, for sure.
Okay, thank you, Ian, you had more questions, I'm sorry.
Just a couple more. The second one was in the drawing, I know it's tough to tell, but with the roads in, the parking, rear, front, entranceway, I know this will come through the fire department, just assuming, just making the assumption, however, but maybe you can just confirm that fire apparatus, all of that's been taken into account here, and that they will be able to adequately make the turns they need to do to service that building, if, hopefully it's not necessary, but if it is necessary, then...
Yes, the turning movements for the fire trucks, the apparatus was in the full site plan approval package, and believe it or not, over the course of the project, the fire department changed their apparatus. We've re-performed those turning movements and reviewed it with the fire department, so yeah, we've met with them at least twice about that topic.
Great, thank you. And the final one, and they haven't addressed before, but is, is there food service, like a cafeteria or a cafe planned within this facility?
No cafeteria per se, there might be some microwaves for staff to heat up their meals and some vending machines, you know, but no cafeteria is currently planned as part of this facility.
Perfect, thank you. Alan, those are all my questions at this point.
Okay, thank you, Ian. Shelby, do you have any questions?
So, I guess the advantage of going first, Ian, is that you get all the good questions either way, so thank you, because I had several of those, so I won't repeat them, appreciate the answers. I don't really have any questions, I do want to just thank the design team for the thoughtful nature of the low-impact design, so that was certainly one of my questions going into reading the packet that we received, so thank you for that. I would be interested just to emphasize connectivity in some way to Westboro's greater trail system, so if that could be a takeaway, and certainly typically as part of this process, I think we give some notes or a letter to the Planning Board for them to consider as you meet with them in that formal setting. And one thing to think, I actually had the same question about the cafeteria. Admittedly, a little surprising if folks are there, albeit for day surgery, that visitors wouldn't have a place to serve, I mean, other than vending machines, maybe to have a snack. I do know that food trucks are becoming increasingly popular, so if in your design there's a place, I don't know, for that to be, you know, where people could get something to eat that's not from a vending machine, perhaps there's room for that, I'll just throw that out as an idea, but I do feel like that might be a limitation in the design. So no questions, but excited for Mass. General Brigham to bring its integrated care program to Westboro, having all the approvals.
So, this is David Burson, Senior Project Manager with Mass. General Brigham, and I can expand on that a bit, Shelby. We will have a sort of grab-and-go food service in the main public lobby on the first floor where you come into the building, so, you know, sandwiches, that kind of thing available to visitors, staff, patients, so we do appreciate that we need to provide some level of food service, but no onsite food preparation.
Okay, yep, that's great, and in one of the packets, I thought that there was sort of some sort of schematic that looked like there was, so that was surprising here, so thanks, David, for chiming in.
Sure.
And I think the food trucks would be well-received, too.
Excellent, okay, thank you, Shelby. Patrick?
Yeah, just a quick thought, first of all, beautiful design, really love the look of the building and the layout, so, and thank you for really doing the work around the green pieces of it as well. Just a quick question around signage, do you anticipate any additional needs for signage on the property or leading up to the property that we need to be aware of as you build this out?
Howard, do you want to take that, or do you want me to?
I think Steve was gonna, yeah.
Okay.
Unless anyone on my project team disagrees, we reviewed the, what's available under zoning with the directional sign and then two wall signs available, and that's satisfactory for us, so the, we can work with the existing zoning for signage.
Okay, thank you.
There's also some supplemental office park, like directory signage, that, being a kind of a tenant in the office park, that there would be some signage there, and I think that covers where we're at right now.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Patrick?
No, I'm good, thank you, Alan.
Okay, Sean, any questions?
Thanks, Alan, just one, so I know as part of this project, and thank you for the presentation, there's also an approval you're going through with the, with Mass. DPH, and sort of wondering, with the timeline that you have provided us here, is that included in this timeline, and sort of, I don't know if you can give us any updates on that?
Yeah, we can, I can start with this one. We are going through that process, as you probably know, this includes that timeline. Of course, if the Department of Public Health, they can extend that timeline a little, which would affect our timeline here, but we are optimists, so we are keeping to the schedule, and it does include that process.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Sean?
I'm good, thank you.
Just a few questions, I'm wondering where you are in conversations or in analysis of this facility's demand for talent services, most notably emergency medical services. My office building happens to share a parking lot with a medical facility, and it's, you know, not uncommon for people to go in there when they, to see their doctor when they should have called 911 in the first place, so we see a lot of ambulance trips from the building across the parking lot. I'm wondering if there's been an assessment about the expected, you know, additional workload for our emergency medical services?
So in terms of accommodations, due to those instances, sometimes where people are sick and need to get...
are sick and need to get to emergency room as opposed to their primary care, we've worked out with the fire department, there'd be a dedicated space in the rear if an ambulance needed to to come and pick them up. Our experience is is similar to yours and facilities that sometimes people are sicker than they think. But it's not anticipated to be a normal course of action. So we have provided in the rear, you'll see just a dedicated ambulance space. And that was at the request of the of the town.
And you've assessed the estimated number of EMS calls per month or per year?
I don't think we assessed it per se, but we thought that one space was sufficient for the infrequent use.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Arthur. That was my question, because the the fun part about going last is I get to check off all the questions I wanted to ask that were asked by folks before me.
I'm Robin Berry, Director of Real Estate for Mass General Brigham. And I just want to add to Howard's Howard's response to your last question. And that is, I think that we've also looked to the experience that we've had at other medical office buildings and have found that really what our approaches or our approach in this location is appropriate, given our experiences elsewhere.
Okay, my question wasn't just around the, you know, the facility accommodation of an ambulance if needed, but the number of trips and the workload that that might add to the fire department and our ambulance service. You know, if if it's an occasional thing that's once or twice a month, it's different than if it's two or three times a day.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that we think it's the former rather than the latter.
Okay. Thank you. So I'll ask just one final check with the board, see if there are any additional questions or additional information you'd like. Okay, great. So if there are any outstanding questions, we can put those in our memorandum to the planning board.
Alan, to that to that point, I think that Shelby and I are both on the same page. I think I would like to highlight to the planning board in their review, the connectivity of the trails. And if we can make a suggestion that we work through that, because I think that would be an that would be appreciated.
Okay, we will definitely include that.
David Burson, again, I guess maybe elaborate on that a bit more as well. We will be connecting to the the regional trail network. I think it's not a direct connection in that my understanding is the main trail is on the opposite side of West Park Drive. So we will have a trail coming down along our drive to West Park, and you can cross and pick up the trail on the other side of the road. So a indirect connection, I guess we might call that.
Thank you, David. I think that'd be good. And just assuming that would also have a proper crossing there, just to make sure we have safety for those.
So we'll send a memo to the planning board that includes that comment. Are there any other comments that the board wants to include to the planning board?
Shelby?
Um, I mean, I just, I think, you know, to the extent that there is opportunity, not to get too hung up in food trucks and healthcare, but if there is space, you know, just to allow passages, I'm looking at the picture right now, you know, for for that type of combination somewhere in the parking lot, that, you know, that maybe that that's discussed as an option. I just think it would be nice, sort of unique service, and people gravitate to that while they're waiting for their loved one to receive care. So that's all.
I would say, Shelby, that for me, it's a balance between providing this food service for family members who might be waiting for people or for patients themselves and occasional staff versus also wanting the staff working there to feel comfortable leaving the building and partaking in all the great restaurants we have here in town.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Right, right. I mean, I think that there is a there's a balance, but point taken.
Yep. No, but I like food trucks, too. So, okay, so we can we can mention that in the in the letter as well. Okay. Okay, so if there are no other questions or comments for the letter, I will thank the extensive Mass General Brigham's team for appearing before us this evening and presenting us with the information and answering our questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next item on our agenda is a discussion vote on the aerial mosquito spraying program. And we've got members of, we've got Ray Goffier, Acting Health Director, and Dr. Alan Ehrlich from the Board of Health with us. And I guess I will ask either Ray or Dr. Ehrlich to introduce the topic about of discussion about the aerial spraying and what we're being asked to do or not do here. We do have one resident who's on, I believe she's on, or will be or will be joining shortly to provide public comment on this as well. And we will give her that opportunity by just for the for the viewing public would, you know, appreciate the intro so people have the context.
Good evening. This is Ray Goffier, Interim Director for Public Health, Town of Westboro. So what we're being asked tonight is, we received a letter from the state asking us if we want to opt out of the aerial spraying program. If we do decide to opt out, we have to have a plan in place, and we would have to pay for it ourselves. So this was brought in front of the board the other night. And this has nothing to do with the trucks that go up and down the streets, Central Mass mosquito control. This is if there was a huge outbreak like two years ago, and the state planes from down in down by the Cape, all the way up to close to the Hampshire border. That's what they're looking at. So Dr. Ehrlich, if you want to jump in with what the board had to say?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, we can.
Yes. Okay, sorry, my computer shut off for a minute, and I missed the first part of Ray's remarks. So if I repeat anything he said, I will, I apologize for that. The board discussed the issue around mosquito spraying, and there were sort of two elements to it. One is that as a board, we do believe that there are genuine health concerns related to mosquitoes as vectors for disease, particularly on triple E. That's the scariest of all of the diseases. It's got a mortality rate that can approach 50%. So half the people get it will die. And of those who survive, often they have significant neurologic, long term complications. So it's not trivial. The last time we had this, that I think many of you remember, we were shutting down outdoor activities early, usually about an hour before dusk. And, you know, that's a significant inconvenience to many people. The other major illness is West Nile virus, which we do see from time to time in Westboro, as well as across the state of Massachusetts. So mosquito borne illness is a real problem that has to be controlled in one way or another. The other problem that we have, as many people know, is that we have a swamp that occupies a significant portion of the space in Westboro. And there's, you know, this is a source, an unending source of mosquitoes. And from our understanding, if we don't want aerial spraying by the state, we need some way to manage the local mosquito control in a different fashion. And there's really no way to control a swamp for mosquitoes short of aerial spraying. So for both of those reasons, the board felt that we should participate in the state's aerial spraying program.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm wondering if Ms. Hutzler, hopefully I pronounced the name correctly, is on?
Sheila said that she may have had the wrong time for the for the meeting. So she's for this agenda item. So she's reaching out to her.
Okay, so while we're waiting, I will open to the board if any members of the board have any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question, right? I think you you answered it. But just just so I'm clear, this is different than, you said, what Central Mass mosquito control project does. This is the aerial spraying. And if I remember correctly, there's, when we looked at it the last time, there's different techniques they use, and even those that get into the root system down in the swamp of the trees where the mosquitoes breed. But but they are, I guess the question is two different topics.
Yes. When we got the letter, I reached out to Tim at the Shamps at the Central Mass mosquito control. And he did say they get a copy of the letter also. And he said, has nothing to do with what they do there. We're still in with them. They're still going to handle the day to day or the week to week operations when they come into town and take care of that. But the aerial spraying project that that we got the letter on is just a huge population, and we start seeing cases. And the state says, we need to do something about this. That's what that's all about. And it happened two years ago, when, you know, like I said, they started down by the Cape and came all the way up. And some towns did where had already opted out. So they were going around towns. The state really doesn't want to do that. So they told us, if you do opt out, you have to have a program. So when the state says, we have a problem, you need to step up, then we have to do the spraying ourselves or find a way to take care of the take care of the population ourselves.
Okay, great. Shelby, you had a question, and then Patrick?
No, I'm also.
Okay, Patrick?
Yeah, just a quick question. Is there any coordination between the ground spraying and the aerial spraying? You know, one thing of is, you know, duplication of spraying in an area. I mean, we want people to be able to go outside and be safe in those summer evenings where there's spraying going on. I was wondering if there's double, if there's any coordination between those at all?
From what I was told, Central Mass mosquito control gets noticed, like we do, of the spring. They're spraying. If they know the town is going to be hit one night, they stop and they'll push off till the next week. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now Shelby?
Yeah, Alan, just a follow on to Patrick's question. Ray, remind us, if you would, how much notice does the town get of both aerial spraying and the ground spray?
So Central Mass mosquito control has a website you can go to. And I believe it starts in mid to late June. And they're on Tuesday nights. And then they list out the streets that they're going to be hitting on a Tuesday. I'm not sure Tuesday, I think last summer, it was Tuesday nights. And it goes from there. And they have a list of the streets they hope to get to. The problem with the state, the state says, hey, we're going to start spraying tonight or tomorrow night. We're hoping to get this done in one night. So you don't know. I think the first two years ago, they started, and then it got too windy. So they stopped. And then they started another night. It got too windy, and they stopped. So we don't have a lot of control over mosquito control. They give us a schedule, and they try and stick to that schedule unless it rains. And then they and I think Dr. Ehrlich has something to say on that.
Yeah, and I just want to add that for the ground spraying, individual homes or lots have the option of opting out of that.
Yep, I do recall that. Thank you. And Ray, I presume that the Board of Health or Dr. Ehrlich, that there would be, we use our billboards, once we know the ground spraying is going, you know, with a website and just to let folks know that that will be starting?
Once I get notification from Tim, and they start seeing, because they do a trap, they start doing trapping in May to check and see when they test, they do pool testing on the mosquitoes.
Right.
And then they'll start spraying later on in the late spring, early summer, they'll start doing some spraying. And they notify us. Then we'll put up on the website that if people want to opt out to contact them and they can go with Mass mosquito control.
I would just encourage us to utilize the billboards, because while the website is great, and we're seeing more traffic, I think as folks are recognizing there's really good and active information out there, I think using the billboards points people back to the website to say, this information you want to pay attention to here. So.
Okay, no problem. I'll take care of that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sean, any questions or concerns?
I think I think Louise has joined us. I don't know if we want to get her comments first and then.
It's fine. You can go. I was going to have you go and then ask her to speak.
I'm good for now. Thank you.
Okay, so I want to welcome Ms. Hutzler if to speak. We'll follow the general rules we follow with respect to receiving public comment during open forum. So if you can unmute and state your name and your address for the record, and then make your comments. We are here listening.
I just unmuted. Can you hear me and see me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Louise Hutzler, and I live in Westboro. I am here to urge you to vote against aerial and ground spraying of mosquitoes with synthetic pyrethrin. In addition to containing carcinogenic PFAS, synthetic pyrethrin, such as resmitrin and Anvil 1010, are toxic to bees and fish, not to mention butterflies and other pollinators, dragonflies, fireflies, and songbirds that eat poisoned mosquitoes. Dragonflies are beautiful, and they eat mosquitoes. Vote for the earth and against poisoning the earth. Don't do this for me or for you. Do it for your grandchildren. Future generations are counting on us to do the right thing. Last year, Minnesota passed a bill that offers grants to homeowners willing to transform lawns into bee gardens. For the past 10 years, I have transformed my backyard into a sanctuary for bees. First at my Windsor Ridge Organic Patio Garden, and currently at my Endicott Drive Organic Mint Garden. My mint plants attract bees. The two times I saw the Central Mass mosquito control truck come through the neighborhood in the last five years, my hundreds of bees and other pollinators disappeared for the rest of the season. Even with my property excluded, they still disappeared. There is an alternative that is non toxic to bees and other beneficial insects, a garlic product called mosquito barrier that is used all over the world. Disney World uses garlic for mosquito control. There are no mosquitoes on garlic fields. Garlic is toxic to mosquitoes. In 2019, the state used Anvil 1010 containing PFAS in the aerial spraying of over 2 million acres, according to a Boston Globe article on December 1, 2020. Many southeastern mass towns later found PFAS in their water. We need to protect nature. Fireflies are flashing and mating when spraying occurs. The insect apocalypse is happening now. We need to take drastic steps now to reverse it if we are to survive. The crisis of COVID has given us an opportunity to reset our climate agenda to work for healthy soil, water, and air. Please consider this golden opportunity to register by May 15 for the municipality opt out of both ground and aerial spraying in Westboro. Thanks for your help.
Okay, thank you for joining us and for your comments. You can stay on and listen for the rest of this agenda item, or you can disconnect and watch on the live stream. Sean, you had deferred. Do you have any questions or comments?
None. Thank you, Alan.
Okay. I myself have no additional questions. Again, going last, they tend to get asked and answered. Patrick?
Yeah, I would just like to say thank you to Louise for her passion on this topic. I've never met Louise. But I'll just say my personal experience with this particular issue. We have a beehive. We had bees for several years in our backyard. We had a hive colony of about 20,000 bees over a couple of years, and they all died off. I'll also mention that when I first bought my house over on Chauncey Circle in 1992, my children regularly during the summer would be outside with hundreds of fireflies. Today, I see maybe a couple during the summer. They're gone. Now, my understanding of this particular action is that if we opt out, we have no choice, but we still need to go pay for for mosquito spraying. So I don't think we have an option as a community to opt out of it completely. But I certainly support Louise and her message that somehow it needs to get back to the to the state, that we need to find more alternatives. Because as I think the board knows, we do have a PFAS issue in our water supply. So I'm hopeful that, you know, the state will move towards more environmentally friendly techniques and chemicals and whatnot. So I just leave my comments there and I do appreciate Louise for her comments.
Okay, thank you. Any other follow up or input from Dr. Ehrlich or Mr. Goffey? Dr. Ehrlich? Oops, you have to unmute.
I will say, just for the record, that I know many of you may be meeting Louise for the first time. She has come before the Board of Health. She has shared her ideas and her views and the Board of Health has listened. And we try and balance competing interests. But, you know, these are things that certainly are out there as part of the discussion when we, you know, when we make our decisions, it's not without having her had the opportunity to hear some of the points she brings up.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this point, if there are no further comments, is if we're going to proceed with the Board of Health's recommendation, then we don't need a motion? If we were going to look to opt out, we would need a motion at this time?
I don't desire to make a motion, Alan, but I think to Ms. Hutzler's comments, I'm wondering if at a future time, the board might discuss whether or not we should write a letter to our representatives and Senator. I'm certainly not an expert in mosquitoes spraying and the options, but it is interesting to always understand what other more organic, if you will, natural solutions that might be out there that are widely used. And I know for one, Rep. Dykema is very much interested in, you know, pollination and bees and all of that. So she may be interested in sort of understanding what options are out there and pursuing that at a state level. So we might consider that as a border of future, Alan.
Okay, I would certainly be supportive of that and encouraging the state to, you know, and the, you know, Central Mass Mosquito Control Project to actively consider and look at and assess the feasibility of, you know, different mechanisms in, you know, more organic, you know, safer compounds that might achieve the same goal or that are likely to achieve the same goal. And so we can certainly put that on an agenda for an upcoming meeting. Shelby, is that something you'd be willing to help get drafted?
I can't help. I'm not sure I've got the expertise to do that, but I'm happy. Since I opened my mouth, I'm happy to insert my foot. Yes.
Okay, you know, the old joke is you say something, you end up carrying the clipboard, right?
I'm sorry, my mute button, my mute button won't come off. I'm kidding. So yes, yes.
We can draft the letter and we can reach out to Ms. Hutzler for some additional information and work with Shelby on that, so.
And I certainly welcome and would like this to be, you know, collaborative with the Board of Health because as Dr. Ehrlich said, it is a balance. I mean, I, you know, nature, we're a part of nature as well, if you will, but it's a complex system. I don't pretend to fully understand, but I think it's worth exploring.
Okay, great. Then we'll take that, you know, seeing, we don't need a vote, but just in consensus of nodding heads of the board, we'll take that as an action item to draft a letter and present it for approval at a future meeting and we'll forward that on to the state and to the Central Mass Mosquito Control Project. Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Hutzler. Appreciate you sharing your views and triggering some action as well. Thank you very much. Okay. So next on the agenda is a discussion and vote to approve the flag display dates on the rotary. This is brought to us by the Veterans Advisory Board. And so I'm not seeing who is. Kristi, you want to make the introduction or?
Sure. I don't think anyone's on from the board.
Okay. So I've got it up. So the Veterans Advisory Board has requested to install their flag display on the rotary for the following intervals of time. Surrounding Armed Forces Day, installation would be there from May 15th through May 22nd. July 4th week would be from June 26th to July 10th. And Veterans Week, surrounding Veterans Day would be November 6th to the 13th. The Veterans Advisory Board has spoken with Chris Pant, DPW Director. None of these dates conflict with any of the planned work or maintenance in that on the rotary from their department. And they also, the advisory board just also noted that, although it's not part of this action that the board needs to take, that the cemetery flag displays will be installed from May 1st to November 13th as part of their annual marking of veteran graves in the local cemeteries. So I can entertain a motion or if there are any comments or questions? Shelby?
Yes, so I know that when this came before the board last year, following the board's approval and the presentation of the flags, which always look beautiful and I'm certainly in favor of, and I love that we're seeing the advanced dates. There was also a sign that was placed on the rotary that caused some concern, not so much in the message. I think it said, we support our veterans or we honor our veterans. I don't recall what it said specifically. But the board is typically, as a town policy, has not allowed for signs to be just sort of placed on the rotary. And as, you know, that tends to be a place for gathering for folks that want to get messages out. So I would just, I can certainly make the motion, but I would like to make the motion that any sort of sign that the Veterans Advisory Board would like to have, I think it would be best displayed using the banner posts across West Main Street. I think it gets great visibility and conveys that spirit of supporting our veterans and those currently serving.
Okay.
As opposed to having a signed date on the rotary.
Okay. That sort of triggers my memory as well that we also asked that there be space between the flags and the edge of the rotary that would allow for, you know, if people were there holding signs for, you know, political or social cause, that they'd be able to do so without risk of disrupting or, you know, knocking over flags, that there be some space there as well. Okay, so do we have a motion?
So I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve, request the Veterans Advisory Board to install a flag display on the rotary for the dates presented for May 15th to 22nd, July 26th to July 10th and November 6th to the 13th. Allowing for space, I think we said three feet, Alan, or four feet? I think it was four feet.
Yeah, I think four feet.
Space on the edge of the rotary to, you know, distance on the rotary for others to stand and so that the flags won't be trampled or disturbed. And also that any request for signs to recognize veterans be brought through the process through the town.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I'll second. Oh, Ian, reach out a little bit. Patrick, okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, we will go with the roll call vote. Sean?
IKEA, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
And Atmer, yes. So the motion passes on a vote of 500, five being present. Okay, next on our agenda is a discussion, agenda was a discussion vote on the Climate Action Plan Acceptance. And we have members of the Climate Action Task Force present. And so I see Peter Dunbeck here, who leads that task force and has presented before. So I will turn the floor over to him for an introductory presentation, after which we can have our questions and discussion.
Thank you very much. The only task force member I see here is Andy. Has anybody else joined? Oh, Peter Flynn. Well, I would like to begin, you know, share my screen. And and we'll begin the presentation. Please confirm that I'm in slideshow mode and you're seeing it.
You are in slideshow mode and we are seeing it.
Excellent. So I did want to begin by acknowledging the task force members. I am Pete Dunbeck. I'm the Chair of the Sustainable Westboro Organization and also Chair this Climate Action Plan Task Force. And other task force members who've joined, I invite you to introduce yourselves and be acknowledged also. Let me actually stop sharing so we can see the, see them as they acknowledge themselves.
Good evening. This is Peter Flynn.
Andrew Caningsburg.
Thank you for joining us and thank you for your work on this significant task.
Yes, it was quite an undertaking. And again, I felt very pleased and proud of the effort that was made and the quality of the people that contributed to this. Let's go back to my PowerPoint. I don't think you're seeing a PowerPoint now, are you? PowerPoint, are you seeing?
Yes, we are.
Okay. So again, thank you very much for the chance to speak to you again tonight. I did want to start our discussion by kind of going through a basis of the work and to make sure that kind of the process and methodology and kind of where we are in the process is clear as we have this discussion. This work is based on the plans and policies and the technical analysis that's been done by that Commonwealth Massachusetts. And in December, some very important documents were released, including the carbonization, decarbonization roadmap for 2050 that's shown in the icon. The net zero by 2050 goal was established as well as emission standards for 2030 and an interim plan for clean energy and climate for the next decade for how we're going to achieve the 2030 goals. It is this work that's the foundation of what we're doing. And the planning at the state level is continuing and continuing to evolve in a rapid pace that will evolve over the next at least couple of years. So our plan is built on that foundation. Our foundation, our kind of basic premise is that we, as Westboro, should be doing our fair share of the climate goals of the state. And at a high level, our goal is to be net zero by 2050 in the town of Westboro. The document we've developed is a strategic plan, meaning that it's, it's established our goals for the community, community wide goals, targeting on the local emissions, which are most important and most critical in Westboro. It does leverage all of the state programs. Our local goals are fully aligned with state goals. And it's the opinion of the Climate Action Plan Task Force that is a strategic plan. We are complete in as far as we can go at this time. And it's really time to begin building out implementation plans. And by implementation plans, I'm referring to specific kind of focused project plans that are time bound with deliverables, roles and responsibility and really critically cost justified. And each of the, each of these plans would need to be analyzed and vetted through the normal approval processes. These will be built on using the Climate Action Plan Strategies that are documented in the CAP. The experience of building out the details of the plan may cause some to be abandoned. They may, they may not bear fruit. But you can't get to that level of detail. You can't make some of those decisions until you get to that level of detail. So we are recommending that the strategic planning be wrapped up at this time and we begin working on the implementation planning of specific tasks. And this is going to be ongoing for kind of an ongoing basis continuously, starting now. The high level activities are going to continue to change around us. Federal actions, state actions are going to continue to evolve over the next couple of years. Technology is going to change. And, you know, some of the technology costs are expected to drop. We're going to find out how much they drop and how effective they are as alternatives to our current solutions for transportation and building heating in particular. And climate science is going to evolve. We're going to get more data in regard to temperature changes and the impact of climate change on our, impact of greenhouse gases on our climate. So all of that is going to create a dynamic environment, which also feeds back into kind of the premise of what the Climate Action Plan is built on, the foundation it's built on. So our recommendation, as reported in the document, is that we recommend that this plan be fully updated, fully reviewed every two, in the next two years. Two years from now, we may not think a two year cycle is appropriate, but right now we're saying that what we've developed, we believe will be valuable and valid for a couple of years. The state programs, there's new building codes coming. There's new incentive programs coming from the state. Our own experience with the implementation projects will inform us and create a better management decision process, more solid experience with trying to run these programs. All of that will create an opportunity to do a version two plan, which is, which we believe would be valuable in a couple of years. So it's in that context that we're looking for an approval on the strategic plan and the beginning of the implementation planning work. As has been reported in a couple of previous meetings, we've, kind of the core of our Climate Action Plan are the 10 goals that are identified here. Four of them as being primary goals and six secondary. And underneath that is a series of strategies, which we believe are collectively sufficient, to the best of our judgment, to achieve the goals. But again, until we begin doing detailed planning and begin implementation, we're going to learn and we're going to have to make adjustments. And really our focus now shifts to the administration part of, how do we execute on this plan? So how do we build out the implementation? What's the governance model? What's the community engagement? So that's where we feel like we are in this, in this planning process. And we're looking for approval on the strategic plan that we've presented. One of the questions that was raised was what was our community outreach effort? And so on this chart is, is the meetings that we held with the various town boards and committees, civic groups, regional groups like the 495 Metro West Partnership. We have We have engaged with these organizations over time and had valuable feedback and questions that help us understand where the community is on these issues. Obviously, we get very smart people asking us good questions in these meetings, and we accommodate that in consideration and consider that in our document as produced. The in the in March, we completed the first draft document, which was presented to you on March 9. And that was also distributed to about 50 plus or minus members of the various town boards and committees, and all of the above civic groups, community groups. In that distribution, we requested feedback via either email, or there was a comment form put on the town website. And we have taken that feedback, and as well as the interactive feedback we have had from meetings with the boards, some of the boards, since the document was produced, and produced the final version, which you now have as of about a week and a half ago. In the presentation to the different boards and committees, here's the summary. So identifying the key, some of the key committees that we met with, the school committee had provided unanimous support. And I thought Amber might be here to add color commentary, but I'll try to do it, is the, I think they were very supportive, they felt it's something Amber cares a lot about and is planning to build into her five-year strategic plan. And the analysis we've done is useful as a starting point for that work that they're going to be undertaking in their strategic planning and then into their operational plans. The planning board also provided unanimous sort of support. There was discussions about concern about unknown impact to property owners, as you know, the devil's always in the detail, and so there were questions and concerns about that. And we tried to reassure that the normal decision processes will be implemented so that there aren't unknown impacts, we make them as visible as possible. The EDC, actually, I shouldn't have typed it quite that way, it says no vote. There wasn't a negative vote, there was no vote at all by the EDC. The EDC took a position that they needed more time to understand the business impact, and there's an agreement with the EDC that we'll be working jointly to develop a study of the business community. Alan, did you want to add anything to the EDC comments there at this time?
Sure, so the discussion the discussion within the EDC resulted with an appreciation for all the work and effort put in and the comprehensive nature of the plan, and a commitment to work and be part of the process as far as outreach and soliciting feedback from the business community.
And I think that's excellent, I think that's the support we need, and it's an example of beginning implementation is engagement through our standard committee process and into the business community, into the residential community, and getting that further feedback. In regard to the master plan, the master plan advisory committee does not have a kind of a standard practice of taking a vote, so they also did not vote on this. But they did send a statement that the Climate Action Plan is consistent with the climate and sustainability chapters of the master plan draft, which has not yet been approved. So that through my participation, Jim Robbins, others on the Climate Plan Task Force, we have worked to stay aligned, and I believe we are. And I believe there's pretty strong support from the master plan overall to the goals of the Climate Action Plan. Again, high-level goals, not every detail. The Advisory Finance Committee had a unanimous vote of support, had some caveats about being in spirit. And again, I think it's this question of, it's a hundred-page document, and there's a lot of details there. And as their normal mission, I think, is to look for costs and understanding of the economic impacts. The plan was not focused on those issues, and there was basically concern expressed that they'll still need to economically justify these strategies before the AFC will support specific strategies. And I attempted to reassure that our normal processes will be used for approval of decisions like that. The community groups that we met with, I thought were very supportive across the board. I had many who offered basically open-ended comments about let us know how we can help. And so I think these are really important for us as we look forward in the future of how we engage the community and reach, you know, it's very hard to get messages out into the community and get engagement across the board. And I think these groups are very critical to our success in that effort. I'm working with a multi-town committee that has climate action, folks on it, and the Natick Sustainability Director also provided a statement of support and appreciation of the work we're doing together, and basically echoing that her Climate Action Plan and ours are very much aligned in many ways. In the community feedback forum, you got all sorts of comments, there's feedback from people that say, that ask questions concerning, you know, whether EVs are actually clean, if the electricity you're using is coming from a coal power plant and so forth. You can kind of read the different comments, I'm not going to read them all. These are useful, they're kind of, some we accommodated with changing in the, changes in the document. It's, I think, speaks to the point that we used the voices of Westboro to try to bring out, and that's that this is a change that's going to affect kind of all residents and all businesses, it's going to affect everybody. Whether Westboro has a Climate Action Plan or not, the state is making these changes, science is dictating these changes are needed. And people have their own context, their own lives and homes they live in and businesses they run, and economic issues, and have their own understanding of kind of how to make these decisions. And it's all over the place, and it makes the transition hard, so it's valuable context for us to be kind of cognizant of as we move into the implementation, that it's not a homogeneous environment we're talking to. And so we need to be aware of that, and we've tried to be sensitive to that in the development of the plan. As stated, the next phase, we believe, is working on implementation. And the Sustainable Westboro and the town staff have been in discussions in regard to how to get started on this. Kristi and I had a meeting even earlier today on this topic. On May 3, we are planning kind of the handoff meeting, if you will, of the Climate Action Plan Task Force, kind of final meeting, and maybe presumptive of an approval, but basically a final meeting and a handing of the baton to Sustainable Westboro and the town staff in regard to the implementation activities. We'll need to prioritize lists of projects. We will definitely be resource constrained, and we'll have to do the projects we think are most important, or most, our resources are best aligned to, and begin to build project implementation plans and begin implementation. We have activities underway, such as we received a CMRPC support grant to help build a website and support some other marketing activities, like a brochure concerning the Climate Action Plan. And that meeting is kicking off tomorrow, that process is kicking off tomorrow with CMRPC. We have been running with Kim Foster and Tim Kayler from the Climate Action Plan and Sustainable Westboro have been running the Mass Save Initiative called Municipal Partnership in Town, which I think is very valuable for us as we again, get experienced in implementing programs that are in this space, and how do we engage with the community? And how do the utilities and the state programs, how are they designed? What are their strengths and weaknesses? And we get going. And so there's a very good program here, we're just in the first, you know, quarter of a 12-month program, and I think it's been successful so far, and I'm pleased that we're involved in that. We are collaborating with these other towns that have climate action work going on. And we, it's a loose ad hoc group, we call them a multi-town climate collaborative. And they, all of the other towns are part of MAPC, Metro West Region mostly, and they have a regional residential climate program that's, MAPC is driving, which we're piggybacking on and will help us in providing technical support for residents in this climate transition work. A couple of the towns have building energy use disclosure ordinances that are being vetted through their processes, and some other towns, including Westboro, are following that activity. So again, we can learn best practices and from these other communities, and it's very valuable as we move into the implementation phase. And so again, we're in this phase where we're going to begin implementation, we're going to learn from that, and then after a couple of years of trying different things and the state programs changing, I think we need to step back and say, okay, where's our strategic plan now, or how does it need to change? So with that, I will show you my granddaughter's art, drawing of town hall, and see if you have any questions, and open the floor for discussion.
Okay, thank you very much. I will open it to the board for any questions. Hand up, Patrick?
I'm sure, I'd like to first say, amazing body of work you and the team did on this, just fantastic to see the level of effort and the detail that was put into this. Just a fantastic document. Glad to see that this is transitioning, so I support that. And I guess, you know, just some general observations, you know, my understanding about the CAP is that it's non-binding, so the town, as you transition the work over to the town, the town's really going to have an opportunity to kind of choose which things they prioritize and what order they want to attack those. Certainly, if there's any funding requirements, they'll need to come to town meeting, et cetera. But is that a correct understanding of how you're planning on transitioning or where that we are within that transmission, transition process right now?
Yes, definitely. And and to do it in a collaborative way with our experience and our understanding of the original intent, and our understanding of what other towns are doing, what the state is doing, and bring that information into the decision-making process to support Kristi and the town staff specifically in setting priorities in moving forward.
Thank you. A follow-up question to that, I guess, really to Kristi, if, I'm just curious, knowing that we don't have a sustainability coordinator right now, I guess, what is the current thinking on this transition by you and team?
Pete and I have had several meetings about different priority projects and things that we could support, and we've had two senior leadership meetings to discuss the projects. So we're going to go over it more in detail on Monday night with the Sustainable Westboro, but you know, sort of the concept is that we, staff has the ability to move some of these projects forward in the immediate future, and so it would be multiple people, not one person, responsible for implementation.
Thank you.
Okay, Shelby?
So I want to echo the thanks for this unbelievably comprehensive document, I think it's a it truly is an amazing piece of work, and there's not enough that can be said, and thanks for all the committee members that contributed, countless hours to create it, so thank you. I think, you know, most of my, given the time we've allotted tonight on the agenda, most of my questions immediately go to staffing capacity within the town currently, which, Patrick, you just touched on your question, and Kristi, I know you and Pete have had several discussions, so I certainly want to understand that more, I'm not asking for an answer now, but with while I understand that, you know, this is a strategic plan, moving to the implementation phase, I'm a little hesitant, sort of maybe echoing some of what AFC expressed, because I'm not sure what that means at this point and what cost and expense. So that's sort of the framework that I'm coming from. When I think about staffing, so existing staffing capacity to adopt some of this work and implement it, who will be prior, involved in the prioritization of the projects? So I think about the work that we've done with our strategic plan, and the workshops that we went through to prioritize the work there and how that's been rolled out. I would imagine this would follow a similar process, but I think that's something that needs to be discussed. Kristi, I see you shaking your head, maybe no, so, but that's another question that I have. I also, I envision that the town is, in adopting this, is going to have to take on a significant role in public education, because I envision that consumers will, you know, some consumers, as Pete already said, are going to lead and naturally kind of go out and start adopting some of these strategies, independent of a Climate Action Plan, others will need validation, not unlike what we've seen with the vaccine right now, right? There are, what, 30, 40, 50% of people that are hesitant to get a vaccine that could potentially save their lives, let alone asking them to make significant investments in reducing, you know, greenhouse gases and address climate action. I'm not trying to be Debbie Downer here, I'm just trying to understand what the role of the town is going to be in taking on. And again, the capacity of work that we're going to have to do that. There's certainly a cost for businesses as well, and so we've got to be very thoughtful. So I appreciate the comments that, it sounds like the EDC has already considered, and the planning board as well. So I'm not going to spend time, you know, that we have here, kind of going into questions, I'm very interested in the prioritization of going forward and how we do this, and how we balance addressing what I feel is a known need of reducing or playing our part, if you will, to reduce greenhouse gases and address address climate change with personal privacy, taxpayer dollars, and, you know, all that comes along with it. So those are some general comments of this.
Can I just give a general response? So in terms of how the implementation will work going forward, you know, it's clear that there's a request and recommendation for a sustainability coordinator. But there even with a sustainability coordinator, we anticipate Sustainable Westboro as moving forward in a role of, you know, sort of a policymaking. If you think about the way the EDC works with the Economic Development Coordinator. And so in terms of prioritization and, you know, moving some of this forward, obviously, there's going to be sort of learning curve and growing pains is how that works. But I think that, you know, I think that that's important for people to understand that there's there's continued will continue to be a role for Sustainable Westboro in support of the implementation of the plan and the priorities, just in general.
Sure. Yeah, no, I certainly assume that, Christie, and I you know, I think we it's a little bit of the chicken and the egg, you know, do you hire a coordinator to kind of get in and really help drive this? Or what capacity, again, I'm not asking you to answer this now, what capacity do you have with across the town departments? You sort of indicated that there is some to take this on working in collaboration with Sustainable Westboro to move forward. I think and I think that Westboro should be I think it's healthy for us as a community to be toward the front of the pack, but I don't think we have to be leading the race. And because this is, and I love Pete, that you've said, you know, you're recommending the two year review. I think that that's that's great because this is going to be a very dynamic space and there are a lot of unknowns. So I think we need to be I don't even want to use the word progressive because that's tainted with political. We need to be progressive in our thinking, not from a political perspective. But we also need to be thoughtful about how quickly we move so that we don't get ahead of our skis. And and we've created zoning, for example, that, you know, harms, you know, creates creates undue harm. So anyway, enough said.
Okay, thank you very much. Ian.
Yeah, I'll try to be brief. I agree with with comments that were made before. I think the a couple of things that I just either reiterate or highlight. One is, you know, looking through the state and their kind of support and acceleration and uncertain things in 2050, the one thing that I just highlight and the board in town have heard from me before is just I get concerned with the state has an easy way to put push mandates down on us and don't fund them. And I don't see a lot of that now. And it was concerned, I think we just have to be cognizant of that and pushback because it does eventually, we just have to be cognizant of the pocketbooks of residents, our taxpayers, our businesses, et cetera, and thinking similar things on the town side. So so echo and kind of what the Finance Committee said and Shelby said it as well is just I think the plan as a strategic plan is well done, well thought out. The implementation is just as important. You know, maybe more important and, you know, moving it forward, I'm supportive of the plan. I will vote tonight to support it, but I do think that as we move forward to the implementation, I think that what Christie's highlighted through the planning phase is the right way to do it. And going through the process is the right way to do it. And I think we just have to be cognizant of, you know, the cost impacts. And Shelby, I love what you said too about just making sure we don't kind of get over the tips of our skis here. And let's, you know, make sure we thoughtfully plan it out and do it in a manner that is effective and most efficient as we can. So but overall, thank you again. I mean, waste of time, but just it's a tremendous, tremendous piece of work and appreciate the dedication of the committee in putting this forward. It's it gives us the roadmap that we need.
Thank you. One, one thing, if I could comment on yours, on the unfunded mandate. I'm I'm aware of that and cognizant of it. I think in the response to the Clean Energy and Climate Plan that the board approved our participation in a municipal letter, one of the one of the tenants of that was to address the need for state support of municipalities in this tradition in transition. Beyond residents and businesses, municipalities themselves need help. And I think we should follow up with our State House delegation on that.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Ian. Sean.
Yes, Alan, thank you. Yeah, this is it's a very impressive body of work that you guys have all done on this. Thank you. And I look forward to the implementation. And yeah, I think that, you know, until we try to implement one of these principles, you know, we're not going to really know exactly how effective we can be. And I appreciate that you've prioritized, you know, where we should go after to get the most done. And, you know, I look forward to the comments and and what you come forward with on on those first couple of goals you had for really starting to move the needle on this. You know, it is something we need to do. We do want to make sure that we, you know, financially don't impact residents of the town too much, but, you know, this this does need to happen. And, you know, so you have my full support also. And I just look forward to seeing what Sustainable Westboro comes up with as to how we can go forward and make these things happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. So I have a I have a couple of comments as well. You know, I sort of want to, you know, step back and say, one of the aspects of the plan that I really appreciate is that we definitely have state goals, state plans, and, you know, state mandates, hopefully not unfunded, but we will probably have some of those as well. And so this is going to happen. And I see the plan is very effective at saying, here's the the goals and the plan and what we expect the requirements from the state to be at the state level and taking a step forward and saying, okay, so here's what that means to Westboro. And if, you know, if this is a state goal for the state and we make it a state goal for Westboro, then what does that mean? And so I look at the primary strategies and the secondary strategies as again, as a strategic plan, these are things to explore. It doesn't mean we're going to execute all of them. Obviously, they have to be prioritized as we look at, you know, deciding which, you know, which ones we move on and when there will be issues that will need to be dealt with that will actually determine how we move forward. And so, you know, I've certainly heard feedback saying, you know, we should move much faster than the state goals. I've heard feedback saying we should wait for the state to push us. I've heard feedback saying we should just be in lockstep or not say anything and let the state just direct it. But as I look at other large issues the town has had to deal with, having the plan in place, and again, the plan doesn't mandate that we do anything other than explore these strategies to see which we which we decide to implement and when. Having a having a plan like this puts us half step ahead of the curve so that as the state proceeds with its plans and its directions, as the technology evolves, by having a plan in place and be and by exploring strategies and implementing where it makes sense to our residents and our tax base and the town and our businesses, as well as the climate, we're in a position to act more quickly. We've seen in the past that, you know, great preparation makes it easier to obtain grants and outside funding. And so in being prepared, it makes it easier to get technical guidance and other resources that may become available. And so having the plan, you know, puts us, I don't think it puts us bleeding edge, but it puts us in front of any other community in the Commonwealth whose strategy is going to be to simply to react as state laws and regulations and requirements are made. And the fact that we're thinking a little bit ahead and planning will be good for the town. And so I see it, you know, much as we do in other areas of our town government, you know, taking a leadership role in a way that is first of all, has been extremely well researched and thought out, incredibly impressive. And in in building into that has been mentioned, you know, with, you know, a recommendation that, you know, two years from now, we're having the same discussion about a second revision of the plan based on what's going on and whether it's every two years or three years, keeping this a living, breathing document and process is important. I do see some action items related to the transition. If Sustainable Westboro is going to, you know, function as a policy, you know, board and organize, you know, mechanism for the implementation plan, it may be time to formalize the structure of Sustainable Westboro more in line with the other boards and committees we have that are policy oriented as far as membership quantity, certain representations, terms, things of that nature, and to put that structure in so we capture the policy and, you know, build that continuity of knowledge and effort that's going to be required over the next many years. You know, so with, you know, with that and just knowing that, you know, on the one hand, you know, the completion of this document is the completion of, you know, a great body of work and much appreciated. It also brings us to a new starting line, you know, from where we can from where we can go forward. And so I sort of ramble down a little bit. Okay.
In regard to the Sustainable Westboro structure, I'm fully in agreement that there's changes needed there. And Christie and I reviewed some kind of draft ideas earlier today on that. And I I look forward to working with Christie and the board and in regard to your experience with how to design that structure to be effective for this type of work. Because a lot of this is new to me in regard to the policy setting aspects of this.
Okay. Go ahead, Ian.
As I say, if you want, I would, I can make a motion or?
Sure, if you'd like to make the motion, and then we can have any additional discussion.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the Climate Action Plan as presented.
I'll second. Okay. So moved and seconded, is there any further discussion from the board or from members? Or members from the Climate Action Task Force, so?
Yeah, Sherrod's hand was up.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a short comment. You know, there is a general presumption that when we apply green solutions, it is going to add to the financial burden of the town residents. And I believe that the many of the recommendations that we are making, the technology and the the situation is that it actually offers cost-saving opportunities going forward. So there may be an expense upfront or a capital expense upfront. But if you look at the lifetime costs and expenses, it actually beats out the the traditional technologies in many, many cases. And that trend is getting better and better as as optimizations are being rung out from the production and implementation and things like that. So just something to keep in mind. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments from the board or from members of the task force? Okay. Hearing hearing none and having a motion before us, we'll go to roll call vote. Patrick.
Welch, yes.
Ian.
Johnson, yes.
Shelby.
Marshall, yes.
Sean.
Tio, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So the motion passes on a vote of five zero zero, five being present. Again, I want to extend our collective and individual gratitude to the task force for the incredible effort and amount of work that's gone in to pull this together and get us to the point where we can continue to move forward and address, you know, by no means the simple issue of implementation, but but tackle it in a well thought out and inclusive way. So thank you very much. It's much appreciated and a great indication of how valuable and impactful citizen engagement in the town can be for us all. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments and for your support. And and we'll be needing the ongoing support of the board and town staff and so forth. It's going to be a collective effort as we move forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, the next item on the agenda is a discussion vote on the animal control poultry bylaw.
Alan, can I just ask a quick question before, just so we're referring to the correct documents? Because I know there were some updates. Christie, could you just point us to where, if it's in our packet, if we refreshed it just before the meeting or if it's in an email? I just want to make sure that the right document.
I'm not sure that it was put into your packet, so you just pull up the email, the warrant in your most recent email.
So it's the ATM 2021 underscore final dot PDF version of the warrant.
Sent at 5:49 PM.
Yep.
I can also put it up on the screen as we go through.
No, I I've got it. I just want to make sure I was on the right version so I wasn't asking the wrong questions. And I actually, I don't think we need it up on the screen, but that's Alan.
Okay. So I'll turn the floor over to Christie to introduce this because there have been a couple of changes since our last review.
Yeah, so after you reviewed it last time, we sent it to town council and she made some some minor changes and then also recommended some probably larger changes. One item I would bring you to is one of the things that the board did in your most recent update is that you had related to complaints, you had changed it to, there was a concern about complaints being one animal or multiple animals. And so you had changed it to to say an animal or group of animals. Town Council has sort of revised that section to tighten it up. And she feels that, you know, it could just be sort of complaints about the property, animals on the property. So the way that it's written, it doesn't have that language that you most recently put in. But it does, she feels, achieve what the board was hoping to achieve. Larger changes that are in here for discussion is she did add, and we've talked about previously, a permitting structure, permitting for poultry. You know, this, we've talked about the need for it. And town council is, you know, in terms of enforcement and tracking what's sort of going on, what's going on in the town, that this would be helpful. So she offered some language related to permitting.
Christie, where is that? If you could just reference that section?
Yeah. So it's under general regulations. So C two, it's on page 15. So it says, no person shall own or keep poultry on any single residential lot without a permit by the board issued by the board of selectmen. Any permit owning or keeping, I'm sorry, any person owning or keeping poultry prior to the effective date shall have until, and we just put a date in of December 31st to obtain a permit. The permit fee shall be $15. That was following on what we charge for stable permits. And the owner and or keeper of the poultry will be required to list the poultry kept and report any changes. Permit application shall be in writing. Uh, permit application shall be in writing. Um, permits may be issued with conditions of the Board of Selectmen as necessary to prevent nuisance conditions and to protect public health, safety, and welfare. Um, so, so this is really um some permitting language that that she put in, and then, and then if there were issues with the property, you know, one of the remedies could be to revoke the permit.
Thank you.
Okay, and then Town Council also proposed um some enforcement measures and fines?
Right, so there's a sec, there's another section, oh, go ahead, sorry.
So it's Section G, it's the bottom of page nineteen is its numbered in the ATM packet.
Right, so um G two um says that the Board of Selectmen may refuse to renew, modify, suspend, or revoke any permit issued. Um, and then um, I don't know if you, if you remember, um, there was sort of a list of different remedies, so one was soundproofing, you know, multiple things that Melinda might do to work with the property owner. Um, and so, you know, rather than sort of box us into specific remedies, um, you know, this just allows for you, for us to work with the property owner, but then also imposes fines if if necessary. And that's, um, the the listing of the fines are consistent. Uh, Melinda, correct me if I'm wrong, with the um proposed fines related to dogs under the state statute. So those are the two major additions from Town Council. I don't know if you want to talk about those first, and then maybe Melinda can direct you to any other changes that she wants the board to be aware of.
Sure, any, any questions about the permitting or the enforcement?
Alan, can I recommend, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, Shelby.
Go ahead, Shelby, you recommend?
Well, I was just going to say, if there are other changes or um items that Melinda would like to mention, just because they may relate to one of the two sections we just talked about, or other questions that relate thereto, could we hear from Melinda first?
Okay, sure.
So I just received this this morning, and I've been trying to review it uh between calls. So the Section B, Section C's number one through five are all added in. Um, the entire enforcement and penalty section has been rewritten completely. Um, some things I don't know where they came from. The, the offenses, the first offense, second offense, that is consistent with Mass General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one seventy-three, which allows selectmen to set fines for the dog control law, where this is part of the dog control bylaw. That's something I was thinking maybe should be in, just in general, for any violations of dog control bylaw. Those are minimums that are currently set by the state, and that one seventy-three does say the selectmen can make their own, but these have to be the minimum numbers. Um, so that's where that bit comes from. The whole rest of that section's been completely changed, and there's a section in here, whoever violates the provisions, um, you know, can be indicted, brought to a court complaint. Uh, maximum penalty for a violation shall be a thousand dollars for each day. I have no idea, um, but these are very different from what we discussed on the twenty-third. I don't know if all of you have had the opportunity to discuss this, but I'm just looking at it today.
So let me just pull up the, the redline version, because it's not completely rewritten. Um, can you see that?
Yeah.
So she's updated the, the, um, I'm sorry, she's updated the definition for residential lot to make it more consistent. Um, the usable lot has, it remains the same. Um, she, we added the applicability of the bylaw, which I don't think is inconsistent with anything we've talked about previously. Um, under general regulations, um, that part is, is all new, because it's all related to the permitting, which was what we just went over. Um, these are all just minor changes. Um, here, there was a question, Melinda um and I discussed it, and we actually removed this language that says, for any animal not listed, the maximum number of poultry that may be owned or kept on a single residential lot shall be determined by the animal control officer on a case-by-case basis. Um, Town Council pointed out that this is subjective. Melinda and I felt that it should be removed, um, so that's not in the one that you have in front of you. Um, and then here, this is the piece that Melinda was just speaking about, which is the um enforcement and penalties. So that's why, that's why I directed us to those two sections, because those are the two ones that are are really sort of significant. These are all, the other ones are really just small uh changes.
Okay, Ian, question?
Um, yeah, a couple of questions um on those two sections, actually. So the first one is, um, I'm unaware of what the uh stable permitting, but is that similar language? And I guess adding this in, probably more importantly, the permitting process as the Board of Selectmen, um, are we okay with that? Are we set up? Can we staff it appropriately, et cetera? It's, it sounds like some added work um associated with that.
So the, the Board of Health does the stable permitting? Um, and so this would just be our office managing the permits?
And is there a reason we do it versus, it seems stables are, so I've learned something today, stables is Board of Health, dogs are the town clerk, poultry is the selectman.
Um, it was just offered, so we could, you could certainly have someone else do it. I mean, in terms of, if if the board wants to move forward with permitting, you know, we haven't um worked with Board of Health or the town clerk in terms of their ability to manage it.
So that's a change we could make in the future. So if we will put this in, we could um have that discussion with uh the Board of Health and the uh town clerk to transition that from the Board of Selectmen, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and I guess, I'll try, I'll get to you in a second, Sean. My question about the Board of Health doing the permitting, this doesn't necessarily require that anyone who wants a permit has to appear before the Board of Selectmen?
Right, you could just approve them en masse.
Okay.
And, and.
Or delegate to you?
Or delegate. Yeah, I mean, you could.
I guess when I look at this, I mean, there's some, the benefits I see of permitting is, you know, keeping track, you know, basically, I think it could, I think Melinda knows where they all are now, but you you put something out, if you, it just kind of keeps a, a kind of a tickler file there, whatever, that that we have them, but um, so I like that, but it's just the complexities of doing it too, and is the the work associated with that. So um, I guess I'm looking to Christie, you and Melinda for my time for comments on what you think about permitting.
Your comment about my knowing where they all are, I know where most of them are right now, but as I said on the twenty-third, I can't share that list with you, um, and it kind of puts me in an awkward position. So I, I, I don't know how you're going to handle permitting.
Um, when we spoke with Town Council today, and I just want to be really clear, this, I mean, you probably understand, because you've seen so many versions of this, it's gone back and forth, we've gone back and forth with Town Council probably six times, if not more. I mean, so that's why this is sort of coming in the last, you know, we got it to a good place, and then this was recommended recently. So um, you know, in terms of permitting, I see the value of enforcement, I see the value of um having that ability to to know, you know, where, where the chickens are. But if, you know, if the board, you know, Town Council just informed us today that they, she felt that in terms of enforcement, this would be helpful. Um, it certainly, I don't believe is required, so.
Okay, actually, Sean hit his hand up, and then Patrick, then Shelby.
So is the concern if, if these animals aren't permitted, then it becomes more difficult to um enforce issues, and if there aren't fines associated, there's limited motivation for residents to fix issues? I guess is that why they've been recommended for this bylaw?
The, the permitting was so that the town would be aware of the activities related to the bylaw. Um, the, the fines um are just, are are sort of separate from that in in a way to s- to spell out um how the town could, you know, how the town could um find someone who who didn't meet the, the terms of the bylaw. So they're, they're separate.
Okay, so, so let's say we require, we tell somebody they need currently that their um, their enclosure isn't in line with the requirements, and without uh, you know, these fines in the bylaw, then how do we enforce them changing their enclosure?
Fines and permitting are two separate things.
Yeah, so I'm saying the fines specifically now. Without fines, I guess how could we enforce their, you know, complying with the rules? What other levers are there?
The previous version brought you bring those issues to the Board of Selectmen, that's certain.
The, the previous version gave um options for enforcement, um, and then, and then said that the, it's the specific penalty for violation would be established by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, so this, this codifies some of the options.
Right, it still allows.
The prior versions in this version still allows Melinda to, you know, issue an order to make changes to structure or fencing or soundproofing or other conditions.
Right.
You know, and and again, um, you know, this does not, um, this does not require that fines are issued for violations, right? And i- as we see with other enforcement actions throughout departments in in town, that it's, it's, you know, it's treated as educational and guidance, and, you know, penalties come into play, you know, when the guidance then isn't followed, right? Um, is is a la, you know, to Sean's point, is a last point of leverage.
Right, the lang, the, you know, in Section G um three and and G four, it, you know, uses language may, you know, the animal control officer, Board of Selectmen may do this. So there's a written um, um, uh, order um that can outline, you know, issues that they need to cease and desist on or fix. Um, it doesn't say anything about verbal uh warnings, but I'm, I'm confident, given sort of the town's approach, Melinda's approach, that there would be ample verbal warnings given to folks to educate them, um, if nothing else. And then if, if there were gross violations of this and failure to comply, then I do like that there's, you know, specific enforcement in, you know, as outlined in G four. Again, you hope that you're never going to get there, but to Sean's point, if we don't say it, then what is it? Please do it, and if you don't, what?
Okay, Patrick? I did not forget about you.
That's okay. So, I mean, based on this, I, I, I'm, I'm leaning towards, I, I'm against permitting. I don't think that that's the right thing to do here, and it sounds like it directly conflicts with some of the work and responsibilities that Melinda has in regards to the data that she tracks and what can and cannot be shared with the board, if I'm understanding it correctly. Um, the other, the other, the other, well, so, yeah, please clarify that if I don't get it right. So the other thing I would mention is, I, I would agree, we need to have a level of penalty, um, even if it's a future, it's a future date, and that's why I like the previous language um that allows the board to determine what those penalties are, because I fully believe that it's, it's reasonable to give people warnings once, twice, but, you know, three strikes perhaps. Um, there needs to be some level of accountability um with, 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 with people who are in violation after multiple warnings.
So, uh, to clarify the, the permitting, um, Melinda's talking about the information that she currently obtains, um, and that's, that, that's not what we would be talking about in terms of putting in place permitting. The information that she currently has is, is something that she doesn't, she can't share, but um.
Okay, all right.
It's not supposed to be something separate, and then.
So just one, one thought of that, but wasn't one of the reasons for permitting stated that it would allow us to track and identify and be able to know who needs to be able to go look out on? Isn't that the same purpose of the data that she was tra, is currently tracking?
No, because we would be tracking, we would be tracking permits, and the permits would give us that information, but Melinda, do you want to explain the purpose of the tracking that you do?
Well, just real quick, one other thought there. The other thing about permits that it opens up is, now you have to start, start tracking, you know, sizing those permits as appropriately, how many chickens or geese or whatever you're going to have on the property. And then it implies that later on, even if we don't do initially, uh, that there could be a cost associated with permitting, and I don't really see, I don't, I, I would rather not have a cost associated with folks being able to have uh poultry on their property. Um, these are folks that need, you know, use these chickens and roosters and whatnot for uh food, in some cases, perhaps even income. So I, I, I shy away from permitting, because it opens up the door to, to potentially another fee associated with having the, the poultry.
Yeah, so the, the bylaw as presented um recommends a fee of fifteen dollars, and um the bylaw as it, as it stands does already regulate the number of uh fowl on, on property, so. Um, and then I think back, there was this, oh, to your second point, um, you, you could um put in the, in the bylaw, we could change it back to the Board of Selectmen would create um the, sort of the fee schedule for offenses, um, and you could have that as a separate policy. Um, but, and we did talk to Town Council about that, but the recommendation is not obviously to do, it would be to do it immediately and to have a similar structure with a first offense, um, second offense, third offense, because what you don't, what you shouldn't do, and what you don't want to do is be in a position where um you're sort of coming up with the uh fines as issues are coming to you.
Christie, could you, you were just going to ask Melinda to clarify the permitting piece in the data she collects and why she collects it. Melinda, if you could weigh in, um, I was checking back on my notes, I obviously didn't uh capture that the last time we talked about it, and, and why, for example, we treat poultry differently than um dogs?
So.
In terms of like permits, AKA licensing.
All right, dog licensing has, it has mostly to do with rabies and rabies prevention. It is a whole different discussion I'd be happy to have at some point, if you want to, but it can be a very long and detailed discussion. The main purpose, though, of dog licensing was to prevent rabies spread, um, and it has been a very effective tool. Uh, it helps us to track and make sure that people keep their dogs vaccinated. The other issue that was, when a dog licensing originally came about, was, you know, if some stray dog ran into your yard and and bit your horse, you needed to know who owned that animal, and that helped us to track who owned that animal. Chickens, as a general rule, don't go bite your horse. The poultry and many of the livestock fall under Department of Ag, you know, Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, the Division of Animal Health. The, the biggest purpose behind the barn book, which is the list that I keep, keeps track of the cows, the horses, the sheep, the goats. Um, there are different regulations on different species. Um, poultry and and ducks are all kind of kept track of in a couple of categories, but not as huge things. Ray tikes is, is one of the categories, that's the one that has the casawires and the kiwi and the ostrich. If I had them in town, I would have to put them in there. The big purpose of that document is to respond to disasters locally and statewide, and to track various diseases. and to track various diseases, and different animals are subject to different types of diseases. Eastern equine encephalitis is one of horses, I don't know how many of you are familiar with it. I know you've heard about the outbreaks in the mustitos. Back in the early seventies, I believe the first cases in Massachusetts were found in four horses in West Brooklyn. So being able to track where they are helps set state policy and Department of Ag policy, and also helps them determine what they, resources they need to place where in cases of disasters. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it, it, it does, so, but, but it sounds like it's sort of on, lack of better words, it's sort of an honor code uh, for individuals to let you know that they have fowl, in this case specifically talking about fowl, that they have fowl on their property. Doesn't a permit create a device through which you can educate them on the bylaw, um, assist them as needed, and, and assist with the tracking you need to do?
There are things that Department of Ag, um, resources and information that they can get and that I can get through them, um, that serve, serve that purpose fairly well. Most of my list is generated through resources that I was able to get through them.
But it, but, but the current process is really sort of, uh.
I'm not sure requiring a permit, um, is going to make more people come and tell me they have them, if that's what you're driving at.
Well, if, if it's a require, I mean, I, I own a dog, I know it's a license and it's different. I own a dog and I feel obligated to, uh, register that dog, so I, if I own chickens and there was a bylaw that said I needed to get a permit, I, I mean, this is, you know, I would feel compelled to do that, whether it's the right thing or not, that's obviously for the board to, to discuss here.
With your dog, the, um, town clerk's office stunted out reminder cards, kind of the beginning of April, for people who had neglected to license, for the dogs that we know about in town. Um, and then in about a week or so, I'm going to start sending out citations to these people, because I know they have the dog, they haven't licensed it, in some cases it's not vaccinated. And this is my normal procedure, I didn't do it last year because of the COVID outbreak and recommendations on, on other different organizations. But what I usually do is I'll send out, you know, the citations, and I'll say, I will waive the citation if you vaccinate and license by a certain time. Um, and I end up with thirty to fifty people that I end up taking to court. So the way I become aware of that list is through the town clerk. I can't apply that procedure to, uh, the poultry without kind of revealing the information that I gathered as the animal inspector through Department of Health. This is what I'm saying, I, I'm just not real comfortable with this.
But I guess my question is, if we have a permitting process and we're gathering that information through the permitting process, then you have the, you know, information that's comparable to the canine information from a public record source that you can then use to follow up to make sure, you know, the, you know, the, the bylaw requires inspection, so that the inspections are done.
Yeah, I want to be clear, I, Melinda, I want to be clear, I, and Alan, you hit it on the head that I'm not suggesting that, I, I think the permit information would be helpful to you, not that that information should come back through the selectmen in any way, in, in fact, I'm not even sure that the selectmen should own this process, to Ian's point, you know, that as it relates to permits, that's, that seems sort of displaced to me. Um, but for now, I'd live with it if that's what we decide to do, but, but I think the permitting information would help you with your, you know, tracking, um, because it would create a formal process.
As I said before, state, state law requires me as the animal inspector to gather the information. Um, just as an enforcement question, what do you expect me to do with people that simply refuse to get your permit? They don't want to reveal to you that they have these animals. That, that puts me in a bad position.
Well, that, I mean, that would be a violation of the bylaw, so.
Right, but I mean, doesn't it?
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
But, I mean, the permit becomes less of an, I mean, to me, it's like, it's less of an issue than it is, I mean, you're, I mean, what else are you not following? Is it really about fifteen dollars, or are there other parts of the bylaw that you're not following? Like, why would someone refuse to get a permit? I, I guess I just can't relate to that, truly.
And it's something that I think maybe we should discuss, but not put it in, if, if, without a more open discussion over a timeframe.
Shelby, I'd be open to, you know, a permit, but I am not, I would reject a cost of that permit, because I do think that there, it does open up potential where people aren't going to buy it. It's an equitability issue, because there are people who, this is not like having a dog. There, there are people who use this as their food source, um, and, and in some cases, again, as a source of income on occasion. So I, I, I find if you want to create a permit, but it should be a zero dollar fee, and that allows, uh, Melinda and this town to understand what, you know, where these chickens are and these animals are, uh, for future reference and, and, and tracking and whatnot. But I, I think we need to resist the temptation of putting a, um, another tax as a result, another fee as a result of this bylaw.
I, I guess I'll push back a little bit on that and just say that, um, yep, it requires time, money, and taxpayer dollars for Melinda to go out and, and check all this to make sure that it's okay, so the.
That's going to happen anyway, that's going to happen anyway.
Right, so it shouldn't, well, I, I think we, we'll, I will disagree on that.
Okay, and any other discussion on the permitting side? Okay, um, enforcement, any questions or discussions specific to enforcement?
I guess I just have some questions as it relates for Melinda, uh, on enforcement in the, in the language. Um, now, I wouldn't believe the town council would not have proposed something that would be in violation of her, her work, Department of Agriculture, uh, you know, but are there concerns, um, with, I mean, the language seems pretty straightforward to me, whether, we can discuss whether the dollar amounts are right, but it seems pretty straightforward, I want to make sure there's no viol, no conflict.
As I said, it's completely reworded from what we had before, and I've been answering calls through the day. The, the dollar amounts, like I said, are, are really in the state law in what regards dogs, but I don't think you're required to use that for poetry if you wish to, to use a different, um, a different thing, but I haven't had a chance to go through and try to determine how all of these rewordings are going to change.
Actually, so town council actually recommended different amounts, but Melinda, we changed it because you would wanted it to be consistent with the dog offenses under the statute.
The dog offenses, yeah.
I do have a question about G four, um, in that the dollar amounts is written in English is different than the dollar amounts presented as numbers.
Right, so that's because we changed it, so we need to fix that.
Okay, so it's the lower amounts?
No, it's, well, it's the numbered amounts.
It's the numbered amounts, okay.
Good catch, Alan. I had a question, I guess. I have a question, do, do we need G five, G five seems to me like over the top, that we talk about we're going to indict or put a complaint in court on competent jurisdiction, I mean, I guess, maybe that standard that we put in language, it just seems a little bit over the top that we're going to indict somebody for not following the rules, but. So basically making it, if I read it, then we're making it a criminal offense, is that accurate?
I mean, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, that it does sound, um, aggressive.
But I, I, I agree, but I think we, we just heard from, um, Melinda that, you know, she, you know, in the case using dogs, and I know they're not chickens, and, um, that she does have to bring people, you know, it does escalate to the level of court. So, I mean, I feel like, again, this is a tool you'd sort of hope not to, or lever, you'd hope to never have to pull. But if it gets to this point, I guess it's better to have it in there than not. Um, I mean, we could take it out, and if it became an issue, then we could add it in, I guess. And I'm the person that thinks people are happy to get a permit to tell us we have chickens.
Yes.
I mean, I guess, I'm, I'm comfortable with paragraph five, because it's the backstop, right?
Or six, I guess my question is, or is six the backstop?
I mean, you, you could argue that.
I could live with that, Ian.
Well.
See, you picked up the wording, uh, we're going to indict somebody, but you just say we're going to use any lawful means we have.
Well, the only, the only thing I'd say is pulling out item five, one thing that, um, paragraph five does is actually sets a maximum penalty where six does not.
Well, it's a maximum penalty per day of a thousand.
Well, the, well, the maximum penalty day where six does not, and so I think, well, action under paragraphs, well, paragraph five is, you could say is included within six. Five does explicitly, is one of those options, limit, you know, it's a high limit, but it's, it's a limit, um, the, on the, on the daily penalty.
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
Provide guidance.
I'm indifferent, because I hope we never get to this, and I know
Right.
Melinda's practice is not that we should hopefully ever see this, even if we put this in here, so, um. Yeah, I mean, I guess in my, we have to, to me, we have to make a call, or else we need to pull this off the warrant, because we're spending a lot of time and we need to close a warrant.
Right, yeah. We need, we need permit fees just to cover illegal fees to develop this bylaw.
Okay. So is, are, is there a suggestion of specific amendments to what's presented? Let's, let's stick with section G enforcement penalties, we'll go back to the permitting.
No, I'm fine, I'm, I'm fine with keeping this as.
Okay.
Including five?
Yeah, I'm fine with five. I guess my thing now is just, I, I I get concerned if, if council put this in, I mean, again, it's kind of, we're in this loop, and do we have to go back to council, and there may be a reason that it's put in there that I don't understand from a legal piece, and does that make, then make the bylaw invalid if we just remove it?
Oh, I mean, you could also ask the question about um, removing it of county, you can, you can, we've closed the warrant previously, subject to town council, um, edits, and so we could ask the question if you wanted to.
How strongly do you feel, Leon?
I just, I mean, I guess I, I feel pretty strongly, I just hate, it seems like we're going over the top with talking about criminal indictments here, and I think, Alan, I understand your part about a thousand dollars, but again, it's not about money making, it, it's kind of a stick, and if it's, we already have five hundred for fourth and further offenses, do we need a thousand in there? No, um.
Okay. So you're, you're, you're asking us to vote, you're making, so you're making a motion to remove section G, paragraph five?
Correct.
Okay, it's moved, is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, then we'll do a quick roll call vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Shelby?
Barstow, yes.
And Edimer, yes, so we will strike paragraph five from section G. Okay, in my notes, the only other, um, issue of change was back with respect to the general regulations, um, section three, paragraph three, which is the fifteen dollar permit.
Well, it's the entire permit. I mean, it's, it's all of those bullets related to.
Well, you're right, but the only suggested change was.
Okay.
I think we have consensus that permitting has value and that it provides information in the public record that can inform the animal control officer in her, in her work as related to tracking and enforcement of this particular bylaw. Um, and may assist her in her other duties without requiring her to share information that she gathers for the state back to us. Um, my, in my notes, the only issue on these first additions in section C were the permit fee of fifteen dollars for each residential lot where poultry are kept. And the discussion about, you know, fifteen versus zero. So if there's, Sean?
Yeah, just one quick question, so the permit, you would just say in general that you have chickens? Right, you wouldn't be required, if you started the year with six chickens and then got a couple more chickens, you wouldn't then have to update the permit, it's just that you have chickens?
No, I think number three says that you're required to report any changes. It seems like, again, yeah, it's, it's, it definitely is, because I agree with Shelby, I mean, permitting, I, I license my dog, it's kind of what you do, I vaccinate, but, um, again, there's a lot of stuff, and it goes back to just even that, the work and who's going to monitor, and is it really, and I think about dog licenses and the notification process, whatever, we're going to have to institute this to send out to every resident, whether it's in a tax bill or whatever, and, um.
I, I think we just want to know that they have chickens, I think, if it's, they have chickens and then a fox gets in and suddenly they've got less chickens, and then they go and they replace them with more chickens.
Right, I, I, I agree with you, Sean, I mean, I'd be, I, I would be, I, I think the tracking is important, I think the, the fee is less important. Um, um, and, um, so I'll make a motion that, um, C B, um, the permit fee shall be zero for each single residential lot where poultry are kept. The owner and or keeper of poultry will be required to, um, maintain a list of poultry kept and provide that information upon request by the animal control officer.
Okay, is that not a second, Sean?
Yes.
Okay, so that, because, um, is, is a point of discussion, my, my thought would be, um, a slightly different modification, which would be required that the list of, um, poultry be kept and any changes reported, you know, annually with the permit renewal. Right, so it's, it's not like, you know, hey, I've had six chickens for six months and I get six more, I don't have to go to town hall and file paperwork, but next year, when I up, you know, when I, you know, renew my permit, I would update that information.
Well, C four says permits are valid for a year.
Yep.
So, um, if they're valid for a year, then they need to.
Fill it out anyways, right.
Fill them anyway, I mean, I think, I think it's, it's a fair question of, we have all this permitting and we're making some assumptions here on how valuable the data is. Um, but we're creating a lot of work for the town, whomever, you know, Christie's team, Melinda, et cetera, in terms of tracking, and what if someone doesn't have a permit? So I was leading the permit charge before, and I don't want to backtrack on that, because I do, I think that there's value, but I think that the reason why we're, I mean, the reason I was leading my permit was so that we have, you know, we have a mechanism of tracking individuals. individuals, I think we, I think we only need to track, uh, poultry down, no, when there are issues, and the issues are gonna come before the animal control officers are gonna be reported as issues, and now we at least have a bylaw to fall back on for enforcement of, it, so it's not about the permit, is what I'm saying.
Right.
I guess, after having this conversation, I'm just not, I'm not seeing that the value of, of the permit is, is there at this time. We've got this in draft, we could add it back in, should we decide later on, but, um, I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just pulling it up on the- screen, so people can see what we're talking with. So you're, you're withdrawing the motion that says a permit fee of $0?
Right, I'm withdrawing changes to C three.
Okay. Okay, I would like to make a motion that we remove the $15 charge on C three. Okay, is there a second?
Oh, just point of clarification, Shelby's made a motion.
Oh, that's right, we have to, we have to vote on, I guess we do have to vote on Shelby's initial motion.
I thought she withdrew it.
I thought she withdrew it.
I withdrew it.
Okay.
So you had no motion?
I have no motion.
So she has no motion, okay.
So I, I thought, I thought you had said you, you were, wanted to remove the whole permitting piece.
Well, yeah, but I, I don't want to jump ahead of what Patrick just said, I'm just saying, let me take the, the motion for C three off the table. What, what I, what I was gonna say is, is that, and I'm sorry, you guys, I'm just looking at this, um, uh, I think then, then we would, we would need to remove C one, if we don't want to have a permit, we'd need to remove C one, two, three, four, and five.
In my suggestion, I am not suggesting that we do not have a permit, I think it's important to have a permit so that we can maintain a list and track, and have all the information available to the town as appropriate. I am just, my motion is simply to remove the $15 fee listed in C three.
Okay. Patrick, Sean, you have your hand up, is that a second for the motion?
Uh, no, I was, that was more of a, a clarification of, of before, but I'm all set now.
Okay.
So, so Patrick, you're okay with removing the fee and then asking for, uh, owners to update and report any changes?
Yeah, I think that's part of the normal permitting process, if it's an annual permit, they should be required as part of that process to document how many birds they have on their property, and what those birds are, and whatever other information Melinda says is, you know, important for her to be able to track.
Kyle, Melinda, I think Melinda had her hand up.
Yep, Melinda, question?
I'm not sure why you want the permit, um, but I wanted to say, as the animal inspector, I get a barn book from the state every fall, usually October first, and I do all of barn inspections, which would include the chicken coop, as best I can, between the beginning of October and the end of December, so I do go through them every year, um, and any changes, higher or lower, I gave my birds to my neighbor three doors down, I, I pick those up usually at that time.
Well, hearing that, I will withdraw my motion to make a new motion to remove all of section C one through five.
Okay, um-
I'm not sure if that's information-
Wait, wait.
-for the town for tracking the information, there may be something else that you have in mind, um, other than the reasons I track it for the state. I do give the town, as the animal inspector, a report that gives you the totals, like you have 900 chickens last year in town, um, which, which you may be able to use for your disaster planning preparedness.
Melinda, can you just explain, for me at least, what the barn book is?
So the barn book is the confidential document that I get from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Agriculture every October, and it's, I go to all the different farms, the people that have stable permits, the people that have barns where they keep livestock, and all the poultry in town, um, and I, I take account, how many horses, how many cows, how many dairy cows, how many beef cows, how many young, how old, uh, there's a number of different items in this book that I keep track of. As I said, it goes back to the Department of Ag, mainly for disaster and disease control, sheep, cows, goats.
Okay, so, sorry, good draw, but just, so, just, um, to ask a question, so, it sounds like then anybody that has poultry has to register with the Department of Agriculture, and then that would be placed in the barn book?
Yes, that's where I develop my list.
Okay, I mean, so if that's-
So anybody?
Anybody that has poultry is supposed to.
Okay, thank you.
So there's only two reasons why to have this section, if I'm hearing correctly. One is to do the tracking, which I'm hearing, if I'm hearing Melinda correctly, is not necessary, because she gets that information from the barn book. And the second is to collect fees, which potentially could help with the cost of managing, you know, this operation. So that's why I made the motion. But the, but the, I guess the issue I see is that, if we were looking for permits so the town can track the information, the tra- the, the data, the detailed data that Melinda gets when she does the barn book inspections, isn't available to the town, it's confidential. So do you need, does the town need that information, or does Melinda need that information due to her job? Is there, is there an extra requirement that the town requires that information? If there is, then I would support the permitting. If there is no reason why the town needs to have their own separate set of books on this, then I don't see any value to saying we're gonna have to have permits.
Yeah, I agree with you, Patrick. I guess, Melinda, to that point, when you were talking before about reporting, you said like 900 chickens, can you also, can you also report that we have 90, um, residents who have chickens? Not who they are, but just how many?
That kind of crosses, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure on that, whether the number of residents, I can tell you, in total, um, all the residents so far, I've, I've, I think I've got 110 addresses this year, I can't tell you what they are or what they have.
But you can tell us, 110 would be across the barn book, which would include cows-
There's also a few people that have stable permits in town that I go to, but they don't have anything, they just maintain a stable permit, um, I don't know why, it's their choice to do so, that's fine, they always had one, they maintain one, if they decide to get a horse, they're not have to, not gonna have to go back and reprocess for a stable permit to get a horse, um, but whether they have one or not, you know, I can tell you how many horses there are in town, and, and in the annual report that I put in as the animal inspector, you have that list of how many horses, how many adult cows, how many young cows, how many beef cattle, how many dairy cattle, how many goats, adult, young, uh, sheep, um, pigs, llamas, although the alpaca has passed away. That information is avail- available to you in a total number.
So, so-
I gotta- Patrick?
So, well, so I put a motion on the floor, so I'm, I mean, we're all having this discussion right now, and I'm just-
Okay, so Patrick put a motion that hadn't been seconded, so Patrick, can you repeat the motion?
So my motion is to remove all of sections C one through five.
Which will remove permitting from the correct bylaw.
No, not fully.
I would second it, but I guess, Patrick, would you be fine, I guess, I just want to make sure that it, we remove it and insert back what was there originally, because I want to make sure we don't lose something.
I, I guess I'd have to see that language, but we can certainly discuss through that once it's removed, I think, right? I don't think it should be contingent on removing something that we don't want.
I think Christie was just saying, there are other references in the policy to permitting, so I think your motion, if you want to remove permitting, would need to be, to remove any reference to permitting throughout the document.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Yeah, because it is in the fines, so the, whatever-
Right.
-section talks about permitting.
Yep, so we would need to remove it throughout globally, throughout the document.
There was no language previously there, it was just an addition.
Yeah, I think that was an addition.
Okay.
So I would second it.
Okay, so moved by Patrick, seconded by Ian. Okay, any final discussion?
I would just make one comment, uh, just to go back on the cost, to go back to the cost of permitting, part of the cost of having permitting by itself is the cost of having permitting, right? It's the documentation, the tracking, the, the communication with, with, um, you know, residents, et cetera, so I'm just, um, you know, I think that there's a cost associated with that, and that would be another reason why I think permitting is just a unnecessary need for the two purposes of collecting revenue, and for the purposes of tracking, because we've got the barn book, and that data exists for the ACO to track.
Okay, Sean?
Yeah, I, I would just say, you know, maybe the town council could help us with, um, if we remove any references to permitting in here, does that then make it difficult for us to enforce issues related to these chickens, and is that why town council, you know, put them in there?
Well, right, it would make it, so Melinda said that people are supposed to register with the state, um, and so if they do, then Melinda would do her inspections, um, that's what you're required by the, by the bylaw, so she, people are required to be inspected annually by the, through the, by this bylaw, um, and then, and then there's also a remedy in here, which is the other piece that I was referencing that we would need to remove, which is to revoke a permit if people are not in compliance.
Shelby?
Yeah, can I just ask, so given the, um, privacy around who has poultry, and I guess agriculture in general, uh, um, when there are offenses, uh, and the animal control officer is notified, uh, that's obviously still tracked, and so that would be visible through like the, through, uh, Chief Lori, is that correct?
Yeah, those are, those are tracked as, as animal control complaints.
Okay, thank you.
So we're now crossing out of animal inspector, and back into animal control.
Okay.
The two hats can be tough to keep track of at times.
Yeah, no, thank, thank you for the clarification, thanks.
Okay, any other, um, any, any other discussions on Patrick's motion to remove, um, permitting from the bylaw? I guess is contingent upon town council doesn't see, I don't think town council sees it a legal issue, but, um, so any, any other discussion? Okay, um, then a roll call vote, um, Sean?
Uh, Kio, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So we will not have permits for poultry, by a vote of 500, five being present. Okay, um, next item on the agenda is to place articles on the annual-
Sorry, so are you all set with the, the other piece, the, the fines? We're gonna just, yes?
Yeah, just pull that one paragraph, yes.
Well, move anything that relates to permits, I think, in the fines section.
Anything, correct.
Just one other tiny thing that's thrown back in, I, you can leave it or keep it if you wish, um, the next one, standards of care, number one, all poultry shall be maintained in a complete, clean environment, properly vaccinated and immunized, and just so you're aware, there's no legally required immunizations for poultry at this moment. I don't know how it got back in there, but to be aware that there's no required vaccines.
But I guess, Melinda, if, if one came into place, this would cover us if we had it in there.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, I agree. Okay.
I didn't see your note before about the red line version, so I don't know if people want to take a minute, because I did send it.
I guess, I guess my question on that, um, because there's a lot of changes from council and whatnot, and we've reviewed a lot of it tonight, but a lot of moving pieces there, if we were able to get a flat file, meaning non-redline version of it, seeing all of these changes in place, um, would we still have time if we don't push this forward tonight, between now and town meeting, to make sure that this is on the warrant in our next meeting?
We have to close the warrant tonight.
Okay.
And, and you have the, you have the clean version, I mean, you, all you've removed is that one paragraph and the references to permitting.
Okay, thank you.
So after this evening, any additional amendments would be brought forth on the floor of town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll give people another minute, and then we'll, if there are other issues Okay, does anyone have a chance to scan the rest of the red lines? Okay, is there anything further? Okay, then we have, our chickens are home to roost, and we will move on to the next item on the agenda. Okay, next item on the agenda is our discussion and vote.
I'm sorry, Alan, don't, don't shoot me, uh, do we have to, we're gonna vote this as part of the warrant, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
All right, I'll put, put them back in the barnyard, go.
You put them back in the barn, thank you, we're, we'll get angry emails about our bad puns. Okay, so, um, okay, Wendy Mickle is joining us, hold on one second, let me admit her in, our town clerk, welcome. Okay, so, um, the warrant to the budget, Christie, do you want to provide the intro?
Yeah, I'll put the, um, warrant up on the screen, do you want to do that first?
Um, sure, and as we've done in the past, um, what I can do is, we can go through the warrant, and we can identify any articles that we want to discuss before we place them on the warrant, um, and then we can do a motion to place all of the other articles on, and go back and address those individual articles, people have questions, or portions of articles, people have questions about, in the case of articles two, um, and seven, which have multiple parts, okay?
Just gonna pull up the one that I just edited for.
Okay. Okay, so I'll, I'll move through pretty quickly, and if anyone, um, wants us to not vote in bulk to place the article on the annual town meeting warrant, raise your hand, make it known to me, and I'll, I'll check off my list and we'll head back, um, back through and discuss those. Okay, so Article One is town reports. Article Two is the fiscal year twenty-two operating budgets. Article Th- Three is the regular recurring articles, A, our reserve funds. B is restocking of Sandra Pond.
So this one, um, you'll see was reduced, um, to seven thousand two eighty because we did receive some donations.
Excellent. Thank you to the citizens who made those donations. Um, Part C tuition reimbursement. Part D request to approve a cable TV budget. Article Four, July Fourth Block Party. Article Five is Lake Chauncey Treatment. Article Six is nutrient evaluation study for Lake Chauncey. Article Seven is our capital improvement plan, um, Article Paragraph A or Section A is vehicle replacement for animal control. PPE for fire equipment, Section B. Section C is replacement for fire engine two. Section D is police cruiser placements. I know, Patrick, you want to address this one, it's already checked off on my list. Um, E is one-ton utility truck with crane for DPW. F is one-ton pickup with plow replacements. G is loader replacement. H is the building condition assessment. I is the high school gymnasium partition replacement. And J is the tasting school sprinkler system. Okay, hold on, I just have a mistake here. Okay, Article Eight is the open space fund. Article Nine is body worn cameras for the police department. Article Ten, stormwater infrastructure improvements. Article Eleven, town sewer system updates. Article Twelve, improvements to the Westboro Treatment Plant. Article Thirteen is extended contract for EV charging stations.
So we should fix that one, just so it says electric vehicle, just to be clear. So I'll fix that.
Okay, so we'll make a note that Okay, um, Article Fourteen is acceptance of easements for West Park Drive. Article Fifteen is acceptance of easement for West Park Drive. Article Sixteen is the Town Seal Review Committee.
And this one has the language that says the recommends whether or not, which was the suggestion by the board for clarification.
Okay. Article Seventeen is establish a disability coordinator under MGL Chapter Forty, Section HJ, HJ.
Yeah, and town council did, did add some information, um, just from the statute that we discussed previously about the makeup of the committee and the function of the committee.
Okay. Um, Article Eighteen is facility rental revolving account. Article Nineteen is amend the general bylaws, changing Board of Selectment to Select Board. Article Twenty is an amendment to zoning bylaws, changing Board of Selectment to Select Board. And Article Twenty-One is the comparable changes to the town charter. Okay, Article Twenty-Two is amend the town charter to include Facilities Department in the Department of Public Works. Article Twenty-Three is to, um, amend the general bylaws clarifying the timing of town meeting and town election.
So this has a, a change here, um, that town council added, just saying that if the Board of Selectmen were to change the date of the election, it cannot be less than sixty-five days from the date votes determine it, so we'll have to make that bold, but, um, that's just an addition, and that's just the number of days that are required.
Bylaw. Okay. You want to skip down a little further? Article Twenty-Four is, um, amending the general town bylaws, town meeting quorum. Article Twenty-Five is, um, amending the general bylaws, Article Twenty-Four, the licensing of solicitors and canvassers. Article Twenty-Six is the animal control bylaw.
I want to talk about this some more? I'm only kidding.
You know, I can eject you from the meeting electronically here.
Oh my God.
Article Twenty-Seven is the golf safety netting. And Article Twenty-Eight is tree maintenance. Article Twenty-Nine is amend the general bylaws, Article Fourteen, the Committee for Soldiers' Memorials.
And this is something that Shelby had brought up that, um, we had to make consistent with the state statute.
Okay.
Um, can I just ask for clarif-, so, um, can you just slide Article Twenty-Seven, just to clarify a question?
What was that, Shelby? You want to see it now, or do you want to?
Uh, no, when we get there, number Twenty-Seven, I have a question.
Okay, so we have a question. So the motion would be to, um, the motion would be to place articles, the articles as presented on the town warrant with the exception of Seven D and Twenty-Seven. Um, and with the modification of Article Thirteen to spell out electrical, electric vehicles instead of the acronym EV.
Alan, don't we have to include with modifications that we just voted on for the animal control bylaw too?
Uh, yes, so along with the modifications to the animal control bylaw.
All right.
Is there
Make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Ian. Is there a second, please, three seconds?
I'll second it.
I'll let Sheila determine who, who won that race between Sean and Patrick in the minutes. Okay, any further discussion about those warrant articles? Okay, hearing none, roll call vote. Uh, Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Sean?
Uh, Kio, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So we have, the motion passes five zero zero five being present. Going back to, um, the two articles for which there was a question or discussion, we'll start with, um,
My, mine is really quick.
Yours is really quick, and we'll start with Twenty, we'll start with Twenty-Seven.
All right, so, and I only, because I know we'll have a lengthy discussion on, on Patrick's, uh, on the hybrid here. Um, so on Twenty-Seven, it says in the, uh, italicized, uh, information here, these funds are proposed to be paid from country club retained earnings. I, I guess I would have thought it would say these funds will be paid from.
Um, they will, because that's how the, the article is written. Um, it's, if they don't pass, then they wouldn't be paid at all. So if you want to change the article information because you think it's confusing, we could do that.
Well, I just, only it says, you know, raise and appropriate or transfer from retained earnings, but it doesn't say, and again, I, I don't recall other country club articles of hand, so I, I don't, the article doesn't state country club retainers. It just says retained earnings. And now that it's part of the recreation department, it just is a little murky to me. That's why I asked for the clarification.
Yes, I guess the question says the country club. In the
Yeah, I can say country club. I thought you were asking if why it said proposed, sorry.
Well, sorry, it was a roundabout way of saying proposed, but it may come from somewhere else. So, okay, so yeah, if we can, if the article says or transfer from country club retained earnings.
Yeah, so I just made that change. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
I'll move that we, we, uh, put Article Twenty-Seven on the warrant as amended.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion, seeing, hearing none, Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Sean?
Kio, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So Article Twenty-Seven is on the warrant as amended, vote five zero zero five being present. Okay, so Article Seven B was, um, a request to change the wording of the article, um, to mandate the purchase of hybrid vehicles, um, as opposed, as opposed to the, um, preference, um, in directive to do, I guess, I would say a directive to do so in compliance with our Green Communities Policy. Um, to sort of frame this discussion, um, this was discussed at our last meeting, and there wasn't, um, sufficient consensus to change the article at that time. Um, there was discussion, and I thought where we sort of landed on this was that we would go and undertake a review of the green, you know, our green communities related policies and the vehicle portion of that. And that, um, rather than doing a one-off, um, change to a specific article that's drafted and has gone through the full process in comply, you know, in compliance with the policy, um, we would have an opportunity, I know the work has begun on updating the policy, um, and that's something that we could timewise address at our next meeting. So the, the updated, an update to the policy could be in effect before annual town meeting, um, and, and before the warrant article passed.
So Alan, I have a
This is Patrick's request, so I'll turn the floor over to Patrick.
So Alan, I have a updated slide to share with the board, um, because I did, um, in thinking about a little bit more, I think there's some better language that we can put in, so, uh, now I can share with the board and then put a motion to that, so. Let's make this a little bigger for y'all. Are y'all able to see that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I, before I make the motion, I'll just mention that I added in at the bottom of the motion, it's, uh, excuse me, of the article itself, in compliance with the Green Communities Act. So that's, that's the only change I've made since I sent out this slide to the board and what was part of your packet. So my motion would be to revise the warrant article for police cruiser replacements as proposed below. Additionally, we've cleaned up the information in regards to the article information to clarify. I can cer-, I have a, uh, as you, I think you've seen, I have a presentation, you know, I have the additional information about, about the police cruisers and whatnot. And I do have some information that I can add on top of this that I'd like to share with the board. Uh, I don't know if that's appropriate to do it now or before or after I make the motion. Your preference?
I think do it before because
Yeah. I would, I would agree.
Okay, okay. So let me just, uh, walk you all through, uh, so my, I, I've just got a prepared statement that I want to read through, just so I have all of the data in front of you all. So my position on this article is in no way directed at a single department, but rather to ensure we as a board and community stick to our commitment to the Green Communities Act. I'd like to share that I have several family members, past and present, locally and nationally, that are police officers and fire department te-, and teachers. I also have a daughter who is graduating with a degree in, in the field of sustainability, two young granddaughters who I want to leave a better world for, and I want all of the town employees and citizens to be as safe as possible. All these things are why I am pushing for this simple change to the warrant Article Seven D, ensuring that it is consistent with the intent of the town votes over the past few years and the GCA, GCA setting a standard by which future warrant, vehicle warrant articles are written that impact all town departments. I'd like to thank past boards who took the brave step and joined the Green Communities Program. As a result, we pledged to the cut, we pledged to cut municipal energy by twenty percent over five years and meet four other criteria established by the GCA. And it is great to hear that the town has already purchased three hybrid cruisers and is in the process of completing many other green projects. There are many, many advantages to this program. The most important is that we as a community have a positive impact on the environment, and we can do this while saving money. It's important that I also mention that this change is endorsed by Pete Dunbeck, the Chair of the Sustainable Westboro. I have learned much in researching this topic, and I will share how the town will save money, have better performing vehicles, and be compliant with the GCA. In regards to the GCA criterion four, there are only two fundamental requirements, mile per, miles per gallon and commercial availability. However, I'm thinking that the board and the community may want also some information on, or info on performance and cost. I'll start with the requirements. Green Community Act Criterion Four states that cities and towns must check the Criterion Four guidance for updates prior to ordering new vehicles. This is needed as the GCA is updated regularly and our warrants and policies must reflect our commitment. Second, the criterion goes on to state that, that based on the twenty-twenty EPA data, four-wheel drive sport, support utility vehicles such as the police interceptors are required to have a combined miles per, per gallon no less than twenty-one miles per gallon. There are exceptions for this, uh, exemptions for this for vehicles that have a gross vehicle weight of eighty-five hundred pounds or more and for firearms, ambulances, and some public work vehicles. However, police cruisers are explicitly not exempt unless they are not available. Start stating municipalities must commit to purchasing fuel-efficient vi-, cruisers when they become commercially available. Police and fire department administrative vehicles must meet fuel-efficient requirements as well. And I'll repeat that, they must be commercially available. So this brings up the next talk, topic, availability. I called the lone commercially dealership for hybrid police interceptors contracted by the state, Marcot Ford in Holyoke. And the sales rep stated that they keep six hybrid police interceptors in stock at all times, three black and three white. Availability is not an issue, and when and if the criterion changes, we will need to ensure purchases are made in alignment. On cost, I hate to say this, but cost is kind of irrelevant simply because the town opted in and we are either compliant or not compliant. The criterion has no mention of cost other than contingency language regarding potential future budgetary constraints and fuel-efficient vehicle policies will not be accepted. That said though, let's talk more details on cost. Today, there are three police interceptor options available to the town. They all fall under the category of mid-sized SUV and are all four-wheel drive. First is the three-liter EcoBoost at thirty-seven thousand two hundred eighty dollars and nineteen miles per gallon. Second is the three-point-three-liter dual-injected, uh, hybrid at thirty-six thousand five fifty-eight at twenty-four miles per gallon. And third is the three-point-three-liter V-six at thirty-three thousand three fifty-one and nineteen miles per gallon. So the hybrid is three thousand two hundred seven dollars more than the cheapest and seven hundred dollars less than the most expensive. But here's where the fun comes. When we buy a single hybrid vehicle specifically for the police, the town will save an expected six thousand three hundred and eighty gallons of gas, removing one hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred pounds of CO2 in our atmosphere, all while saving seventeen thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars in fuel, which covers forty-eight percent of the base vehicle cost and the expected life of five years. Double that data for two. This is something that none of the other three, the other two versions can do. Additionally, the town is only eligible for the grant money if compliant, so that's another five thousand dollars per cruiser, this round of grant money. I'll also mention that there is no need for cruiser charging stations. The cruisers recharge the electric battery on the fly. Again, it's great that we have already bought three. This leaves performance, three points on this. First, the Ford Police Interceptor is not a Ford Explorer. The Police Interceptor is a pursuit rated and a hybrid version of it is, of it is the first in the industry. It has many, many structural changes from larger brakes to stronger structural reinforcement to withstand seventy-five mile-per-hour rear impact versus the Explorer, which is only rated at fifty mile per hour. These change its weight and its fuel rating. The sec-, second, in speaking with a family member who is a twenty-plus-year veteran sergeant in a bordering police department, he stated that he has driven these a few times and there is no performance issue, and that they take just a little getting used to. He also mentioned that his town is switching all over to hybrid, and that he didn't think there was any other option as the town is also a green community. Third, the town of Ducksbury, also a green community, did a report at the request of their finance and fiscal advisory committees for additional information to accompany budget requests for new or replacement vehicles. The position cited The position cited overwhelmingly determined performance was unaffected as tested by the Michigan State Police. Specifically, the Police Interceptor Utility Hybrid accelerated from zero to one hundred miles per hour in an impressive seventeen point second, seven seconds. That's quicker than all other vehicles tested except for the Interceptor Utility equipped with the four-hundred horsepower three-liter EcoBoost V-six, which we now know is not compliant to the Green Communities Act as it only gets nineteen miles to the gallon. Costs seven hundred dollars more and will also cost nearly eighteen thousand more to operate over its lifespan. Furthermore, on a two-mile rotten road course, were similar results. The Police Interceptor Hybrid completed the circuit with a best time of ninety-nine point seven seconds, once again putting, quote, "a smackdown" on the rest of the SUVs save for its EcoBoost-powered brother, which lapped the circuit in ninety-six point five seconds. Furthermore, braking results were also encouraging. The twenty-twenty Interceptor Hybrid required one hundred and thirty-two point four feet to come to a stop from sixty miles per hour. And over the police SUVs, only the Dodge Durango stopped at one hundred and twenty-eight point four feet. And the Chevrolet Tahoe did the poorest, requiring one hundred and forty-five point seven feet. Simply, the hybrid is cheaper, performs well above average, is commercially available, and is the only vehicle compliant to the miles per hour, miles per gallon requirement. Finally, I'd like to state that we are bound to the GCA, and we must ensure at every opportunity that a warrant article purchases that fall under the GCR one hundred percent compliant. Changes take sustained courage. I hope the board will continue to support the community's wishes of actually being a green community and make this simple update, eliminating this type of loophole, which could endanger our future participation in the GCA and the grant money that it comes with. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Christie?
I just want to make a point. I know that Patrick is discussing the EcoBoost and the, the town does have a Ford EcoBoost. You did see that in the letter that the chief provided. It is a Ford Explorer EcoBoost. It is not a Ford Interceptor. And so it does comply fully with the GCA at twenty-three miles MPG. So I just want to be really clear about that, and I also want to be clear that no one is arguing that we should be moving forward and complying with the Green Communities Act. The police department is doing a fantastic job complying with the Green Communities Act and their purchase of three hybrids. And so I just want to be clear that there's, you know, there's, there certainly is, is compliance with the GCA. We are following the guidelines and the criteria.
Christie, I completely get it, and I certainly appreciate those efforts to purchase hybrid vehicles close to date. I read the chief's letter, which is now part of our packet in open meeting. And, you know, definitely, as you read through some of the perspectives that he shared, there definitely is a tendency, it sounds like, to possibly not buy hybrid vehicles. And my point with this presentation is purely that the town and the board has previously opted into the Green Communities Act, and they have no choice but to purchase a hybrid vehicle at twenty-four miles per gallon. This is the one and only vehicle for a police interceptor quality vehicle that's rated as a police interceptor that is on the list from the, from the state's list on comp buys of vehicles.
The, the Green Community Act does not require a hybrid. It requires a fuel-efficient vehicle. And so if the police are purchasing a vehicle that does not, is not required to be a hybrid, as they have recently, when they purchase the Explorer, it, it, I just want to be clear that it's not, does not require a hybrid vehicle.
You are correct. It does not state that it requires a hybrid. What it does state, though, is that four-wheel-drive SUV vehicles must have a twenty-four mile-per-hour, excuse me, twenty-one mile-per-hour rating or higher. And in fact, the only police, again, searching on that four-thousand-row spreadsheet from the state of all the vehicles that are available to us, the only one that qualifies that for the police interceptors is the hybrid vehicle. That's why we're kind of in our, you know, in this place where we have to purchase that.
Well, but my, my, I mean, I don't want to go back and forth. My point is that the police do not only purchase interceptors. And so if their intention is to purchase interceptors and the only one available that meets the criteria is a hybrid, then that's, you know, that's fine. But that's not, what I'm saying is they do not only purchase interceptors.
Correct. There are other, you know, there's a truck version of it, there's other versions, but the pure Explorer version, and Ford will be the first person, company that'll tell you that the Explorer is not the same as the Interceptor, specifically with that crash rating of seventy-five miles per hour versus the fifty miles per hour as well as brakes that are larger so that it can, you know, stop quicker. All of these things are key features in the performance of a police vehicle. So.
Right, right. But they don't only purchase interceptors. They, they did purchase a Ford Explorer. They did purchase a Chevy Tahoe. So, so they, I just want to be clear that they don't only purchase interceptors.
Right. I mean, I, I, the Tahoe and the other large vehicles that we mentioned, I mean, those certainly are things. And I'm, I'm completely open and willing. It's actually one of, you know, I'm going to lead the effort on goal review. So this fits right into the wheelhouse there in regards to going back and reviewing that policy. Because right now, this warrant article and that policy are neither one, they're, they're written based on two thousand and eighteen. And apparently, the state has made modifications that have not yet been accounted for in that policy. And we are due to go back and do that. So I completely support that. But this is an opportunity to make sure that moving forward, there, there really is no risk here. The, the police department's already purchasing hybrid vehicles. We're telling, we're explicitly saying in this article and articles moving forward related to vehicles that they must be compliant to the Green Communities Act. So there is really no risk to the police department or the community. As a matter of fact, it's all a win-win. All this data I have on screen right now is really all goodness, and, and we need to make sure that we enforce that through, you know, this motion.
Okay. So Patrick, do you can unshare the screen for a moment, so people?
Sure.
And see the, see the discussion.
Yep.
Okay. And so I'll open it to the board for any.
Should I make the motion first? Should I make the motion first here, Alan?
Um, I. You can unless you want to get, you know, a heartbeat of where the board is at before you do.
Oh, sure. We can, we can start a discussion first, I guess. Sure.
Okay. Ian, Shelby, or Sean, any?
Um, just, just so we're clear, Patrick, can you, before we, before you, as you make your motion, can you pull that back up on the screen, not right now for a purpose of discussion, but just so it can be clear with what we're talking about?
Sure.
I guess I'll just make a comment. Patrick, I appreciate all the research that you did. And my, my understanding from what you presented and just to be clear with the kind of as well with Christie's comments is that the, the police department purchases a variety of equipment and, and vehicles. But as it relates to this article and the intention of utilizing Green Community Act grant money, my understanding is that the only vehicle that allows us to comply with that that's available through the state sourcing, if you will, that we're accessible to, is the one that's been identified. I mean, the Interceptor.
Correct.
Based on fuel efficiency and the fact that it's commercially available.
Correct.
Okay. Ian?
Yeah, and I guess I'm still similar to last time. I understand what Patrick's saying here. I just feel like it's. I don't know. We have to trust our department has been doing the right thing by the policies we put in place. And I think, you know, a ton of research there, but, you know, if something's there, the, the police chief has some concerns with the hybrids they have now. We're waiting on one hybrid. It's still to be delivered. That was bought, I think, with the grant money that we had that was mandated that we put hybrids in, which we were happy to comply with because that's where it was. But I guess. You know.
Yeah, I get it. Sorry.
I don't know that mandating. I just feel like that may. It may backfire on us in the sense if something happens and we're, we're restricting ourselves in a way that, that.
Sure. Yeah, I know. Ian, I totally get you. I mean, and that's one of the beauties, actually, I'll just mention. The Criterion Four is probably one of the simplest and, I think, concise articles or, or criterion I've read in a long time. It's, it's very straightforward. And one of it, one of the things that it specifically lays out is that the town is actually responsible for updating its policies in alignment with on a regular basis. So it allows us the flexibility to execute against that policy as it's been updated by the state appropriately. So we can do that. I'll also remind the board that there is no definition other than commercially available. So regardless if it's taking a lead time of two weeks, six months, or a year, is irrelevant. The criterion simply states that if it is commercially available, you must purchase a, a compliant vehicle.
And, and, and understanding that, and I guess we can, you know, try and interpret what the legislature meant when they said commercially available. My concern with, you know, limiting it, you know, to hybrid is, and it really goes to commercial availability, right? So if the time the vehicles are ordered, for example, there's an issue with battery manufacturing. You know, heck, it halted the production of, and shipment of Teslas at one point for five and a half months. You know, it, it, at that point, if we need the cruiser and that delay has a negative impact on the fleet, then yes, you know, the, the purchase still has to be compliant with the GCA. But that might mean getting not the Interceptor, but getting a different model of vehicle to fill the role of police cruiser.
Correct.
The article, the article, please let me finish. The article doesn't specify the make or model or the, the level of the vehicle. It says that the, the vehicle has to comply with the Green Communities Act and that it is a police cruiser. And that it's really, you know, the expertise of the chief and his command staff to determine, you know, the appropriate vehicle. And so I, you know, my feeling is the way the article is worded as is allows the department to say, you know, yes, you know, as you pointed out, under the current GCA rules, if it's an interceptor, it's hybrid. But if it's not an interceptor, then it could be a hybrid or a vehicle of high enough MPG to comply. And, you know, from my viewpoint, there are a couple of, you know, issues here. One is the worry about the law of unintended consequences when we make things too restrictive. Secondly, is, as you pointed out, we have a policy that's in line with the GCA and is supposed to be updated with. We have the ability to update the policy. You know, even before these vehicles are purchased, even before town meeting comes and the purchases execute, you know, and the purchase is authorized. So from a, you know, you know, desire to see us moving, you know, whenever, wherever, you know, as close to exclusively possible towards hybrid, I think the warrant article as written serves the purpose, but provides that, you know, that just-in-case flexibility that, that the town may need. So.
I'd be happy, I'd be happy to have adjustment of the policy on the May eleventh, you know, on our, our first board meeting in May, which is before town meeting. So we could certainly talk about that, I think, after we get through this motion discussion first. But, you know, I, I would, I would say a couple of things. First of all, Ford is committed to deliver thirty thousand vehicles per year. So they're right now, they're ramped up, they're delivering these. These are state-of-the-art. They are, they are considered to be the best vehicles for a police force right now for many, many reasons, which I could go on a list for a while. I, I would also say in regards to your comment around unintended consequences, I did not, I was not on the board when the board decided to join the Green Communities. This is a fact. The Green Communities actually requires this. This is not Patrick Welch's requirement. This is a requirement of the Green Communities. And I get it, right? Moving forward, let me, let me, let me finish my thought, let me finish my thought. So I, I completely agree with you. Article, warrant articles moving forward should simply have the last addition to the last sentence there that I added. But in this particular case, we're going to a vote at town meeting, and this vehicle is on it already, and we already know that today this is the only vehicle that qualifies. So that's the reason. Now, I'd be, I'd be completely willing, you know, I, I, we can take off the word hybrid, but it's very important that we purchase that hybrid vehicle because it does put us at risk of perhaps not being compliant. And that's what I want to just make sure the board is aware of.
Okay. I, I, I appreciate that. And I guess the, the one contention I have is that if the, if the hybrid interceptor is the only model of police cruiser that Ford sells that at the interceptor tear that meets the Green Communities Act, then yes, if the department decides to purchase the interceptor, it would need to be a hybrid. I'm, I'm appreciative that you're comfortable removing the mandate on hybrid and leaving the, you know, compliance with the Green Community Act. Because if the police, if our chief and his team decide that an appropriate cruiser is a different model of vehicle, then so long as it meets the GCA requirements, I guess I'm comfortable. I wouldn't want to force that into a hybrid vehicle. They may pick, they may pick a make and model vehicle for cruiser that's not available in, in hybrid. And I know that's unlikely, and I know we're really talking about interceptor here. So I'm, I'm comfortable with continuing the requirement that the purchase complies with the Green Communities Act. It's that mandating specifically of a hybrid is where my concern lies. So, yeah, that's the answer. I know you see it differently, but Shelby also had her hand up, so.
Sorry. So, yeah, I mean, Alan, mine is the same. I think the specificity of hybrid in, as, I know it hasn't been formally presented as, as a motion, to me is, is redundant. It's not necessary. I think the language of compliance with whatever Patrick's already put in there, compliance with the Green Communities Act is sufficient because then it points to the, that act and the criterion, which then is, is constantly being updated. And so regardless of the, well, in this case, the police department, Chief Laurie can look to that at the time of purchase and say, okay, what's the criteria, you know, what's the criteria du jour at, at the time of my purchase, and am I aligned with it? And whether it's Interceptor or Tahoe or whatever, I mean, you know, whatever it is in that police category, he's going to make that decision, but it's going to be guided by the, by the Green Communities Act. So that, that's all. I just think the hybrid language is, you know, is not, is not necessary.
Okay. Patrick, and then Chief Laurie has joined us. I'm sure he might have a comment or two.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just remind the board again, this article is only this article. It's, it's only this purchase, this, this particular purchase we're making. If, in fact, one of the departments comes up later with another article later in the year, next year, whatever, that act, that article can be, you know, written appropriately at that time. So there's no, by putting the word hybrid in it, it doesn't bind us for future articles. It just simply says for this particular purchase, we require that the town purchase a hybrid cruiser, a police interceptor essentially.
Okay. Chief Laurie?
Good evening, everyone. Long evening to you folks and myself. So the issue I have is we ordered, we ordered two hybrid vehicles from spring town meeting, and we've taken one. And one. We had another cruiser that was involved in an accident that we had to replace. It was a Ford Taurus. We didn't have enough money to buy a hybrid interceptor. But we did. We utilized, we utilized asset forfeiture money and we purchased because we are committed to this program. I'm committed to purchasing two hybrid cruisers at this fall town meeting. But you have to understand that if cars aren't available, we bought a two-point-three-liter EcoBoost for one of our command staff members. It's a police car. It goes to emergency calls. And that is in compliance with Green Communities. The other issue is our Accident Reconstruction Sergeant, who was involved in a very serious crash years ago. He was rear-ended. He was out of work for over a year, multiple surgeries that he returned is a miracle. He is our Accident Reconstructionist. He had equipment, heavy equipment on his passenger seat of his cruiser, his, his interceptor. It just wouldn't fit. So we, for the, have the right equipment for our officers. We went to a Tahoe, an EcoBoost Tahoe, because that was the right thing, right piece of equipment for that officer. As other, as we talked about today, Peter, I listened to his presentation, as we work with other communities and other police departments getting. As we work with other communities and other police departments get involved and there's this huge drain uh on these vehicles that if four or five of my cars go down and I have to order another type of Ford Explorer to get to answer the calls, I mean, that's what we have to do. And and our, our mission, our focus is to purchase hybrid cruisers, these two cars. But if something happens, I want to be able to say, hey, listen, I can't wait. I mean, we're, we're talking a year. If they're available, it's a year. I still have not taken possession of that car. Hopefully it's this week, maybe next week, uh, but that's just a fact. We at at Fall Town Meeting, we were authorized for the Ford Explorer and the Chevy Tahoe. They're both here. They're both on patrol. They've been here for over a month. So that's the problem I have with you saying strictly hybrid when something happens. If I've got a bunch of cars going down, I can't wait. And I've got to find another vehicle that falls within the Green Communities Act, that falls within Sustainable Westboro, that I have the ability to purchase it. But you need to understand, Patrick, I'm 100% committed. Um, I was, I, from day one, uh, and and like I said, I'll, whenever possible, th- these are the vehicles we're going to purchase. And we were so committed, we took asset forfeiture money so we wouldn't have to come back to the town to make up the difference from the Ford Taurus to the hybrid uh interceptor. So I, I don't want to talk forever, but the 2021, you know, you commented, uh, one of the 2020 3.0 EcoBoost, it wasn't in compliance. Every year it's changing. Well, in 2021, that same vehicle 3.0 EcoBoost is now 21 miles per gallon, it falls within. So if I had to purchase that, it does fall within that range. I don't want to purchase that. I want to purchase two hybrid cruisers if they're available. But I'm just asking the board uh to not handcuff me, so to speak, in case something happens. And I don't, it's been a long meeting, um, it's been a very long day uh for me personally. So if you have any questions, we more than have to answer them. We're putting together a list of all our cruisers, mileage, fleet, replacements, everything that's been asked by the board. Uh, we're fully transparent uh in our warrant articles and our purchases. Same thing with the warrant article on the uh, on vehicle for Melinda for animal control. They don't offer them and that vehicle's 27, 28 miles per gallon, that little transit van. So not to go off topic, but I just wanted to kind of just give you my perspective on it as your chief. Um, you know, I'm committed to this program, um, you know, it, we're working out the kinks with the cars. Uh, there are some issues we're working out here and there. Um, and and we're testing them out. We, we only had these cars for a short amount of time, so. That's my sense to the conversation and um, thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the board.
Okay, thank you very much. Sean, did you have a question? Comment. Okay, Patrick?
So for, yes, chief, by all means, I think you guys are doing a great job. I really appreciate the work and certainly the stories you just brought to our attention are are important for us to understand. Um, I'm, I'm not sure if you heard my whole presentation, but I certainly have a a a passion and and support the police department thoroughly. I have many family members who serve in the police forces, forces around the area and throughout the country. Matter of fact, my grandfather was a volunteer policeman back in the 50s and 60s for the town of Westboro. So a lot of history there. Um, so I certainly support you and all the work you're doing. And it's great to hear that you are committed to this because, you know, by joining the Green Communities Act, uh, the town signed up for this and it is, um, can be sometimes a tough pill to swallow. It's, it's a, it's a big movement to make our community green. And I I get it. It's hard. Um, unfortunately, this is, I didn't write this. Unfortunately, in the criterion for the Green Communities Act, there's two things I think people need to be aware of. There is no exception for a year. I get it. That's horrible. We, we, we should write a letter to the state saying we need to get these vehicles quicker. I support that. That, but that is not something that is in the criterion today, so we cannot use that as a metric by which we purchase these vehicles other than it's commercially available, which they are. Um, and according to what I said earlier, they are regularly available at the single dealership that is contracted by the state for these hybrid cruisers. And so I get it. There's, you know, probably 170 communities in the Green Communities Act that are all trying to probably get hybrid cruisers. Right? So totally understood. Um, I I I would just also make sure that the board is aware that one of the other thing that, things that's listed inside the criteria on it is is a statement specifically that talks about alternative compliance from meeting criterion four, which can only be used if all vehicles in the fleet are exempt. So we cannot use things like um, uh, idling technology in our, in our, in our vehicles. Because if a single vehicle is non-exempt in the entire fleet, we cannot use the alternative uh options, which was really surprising. But they're really forcing the hands of communities to fully adopt this and be very aggressive on on rolling onto compliant technology. So I'll just leave it there.
Okay. Any further discussion or Patrick, would you like to make your motion?
I think Pete, did you have your hand up?
We're not, we're not bringing public comment to this issue.
No, no worries. I thought I saw him wave his hand.
Nothing personal, Pete.
So I will, uh, yeah, I'll make my motion. Let me pull that up for you as requested. All can see that?
Yep, we can see it.
Okay. So my motion is to revise the warrant article for police cruiser replacements as proposed below.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion? Okay, Christie? I know you can't second it, but you want to make a point?
No, I just, all I was going to say is that, um, if you were to amend the article as proposed, that last section in compliance with the Green Community Act would actually need to come earlier in the article because it has to end with that or take any other action thereon.
Okay, so. Alan, have I waited long enough for a second or?
If you want to amend the wording for your motion, we can give a second, a little more time.
I think Patrick, if you want me to help you out, I think if you just said purchasing two hybrid police cruisers um, and associated equipment, including all costs incidental and related thereto in compliance with the Green Community Act or take any other action thereon.
Okay, so you're talking about, let me just make that change so everybody can see it in real time. Oops, sorry, on computer. This is, this is your suggestion, Christie?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Okay. So Patrick, you're amending your motion?
Yes, to this now, this statement?
Okay.
This change?
Is there a second? Okay, this is where I need a parliamentarian.
So Alan, not hearing a second, I'm, I'm, I, I would move to make a second motion, which would remove the word hybrid.
I'll second that motion. With the understanding that the article information below would need to be amended, that it's, would say, you know, would include the when possible, when possible or where possible. And then obviously the, yeah.
I I just want to make sure the board is aware that we are at risk of violation, in my opinion, after reading all the material.
I, I don't, I, respectfully, Patrick, I, I don't agree. I think if we're, if we can defend our purchase in compliance with the Green Communities Act, I'm, I'm comfortable that uh Chief Laurie and Christie will ensure that we're, you know, documenting those purchases and making the right decision. Um, and I think we've already, we have past practice of of, uh, you know, attempting to purchase those hybrids. And I suggest maybe Chief Laurie, give your sales guy a call in all seriousness.
Yeah, I hope so, I hope so, Shelby. I mean, we're going to get audited at some point, I would imagine on this, right? And and we'll see what happens.
We actually have been, just to be clear, so we actually have been, it's not audited, but we've created an annual report where we submit all of our vehicle purchases. Um, and we are in compliance. I, I just want to point out that the criteria does say that, um, it, it does say, what you, what you've been saying, Patrick, that it's when cruisers become commercially available. But the sentence that precedes that says, in addition, police cruisers are exempt from this criterion due to market availability. However, you know, communities must commit to purchase. So there's a recognition within this criteria that there's an issue with market availability.
Correct, but when commercially available, right?
But market availability is different than commercial availability.
Right, and that's why, that's why they bolded the commercial availability. So, I mean, it's, it's, and it's must, right? Bold capitals.
Right, but there's an exemption for market availability.
It's, it's bolded because those are changes in from in February.
Okay, so, um, any other, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Um, any other discussion? Hearing seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Um, Sean?
Sorry, I'm still thinking about it. Uh, KEO, no.
Uh, Marshall?
Marshall, yes.
Ian?
Uh, Johnson, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So it passes on a vote of 4105 being present. Thank you all for, yeah. So we now need a motion to place um Article 7, Part D on the warrant as amended.
So I'll make that motion, Alan. I'll make a motion to put Article 7D on the warrant as amended.
Is there a second? Thank you, Ian. Any further conversation? Hearing seeing none, roll call vote. Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Sean?
KEO, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So that is on the warrant on a vote of 5005 being present. Okay, um, with all of the articles now placed on the warrant, I will entertain a motion to close the warrant for annual town meeting.
Well, Patrick, can you just put that back up so I can make the change in the warrant?
Sure, sure. Click all these buttons and we'll get it up there.
While he's doing that, I'll make the motion that we, uh, with these changes voted that we close the warrant.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion or debate? Hearing seeing none, roll call vote. Shelby?
Yes, Marshall, yes.
Sean?
KEO, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So the warrant is closed on a vote of 5005 being present.
Okay. Christie, did you, did you get this all?
No, it keeps going away.
Sorry.
Do you want to just, um, do you want to just copy it to me in an email? That would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, yep.
Okay, you can stop presenting what you're doing.
Yep, 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 sorry.
Give, everyone's got a little video whiplash.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, it's like Hollywood Squares. Okay, so the next part of this agenda item is the, um, the budget. And so I will entertain a motion to support the department budgets as presented.
Do you, do you want me to present the, well, you all have it in your pocket, so.
Anything you want to present, but I think it was.
We, we could walk, we could walk through the line items again.
Well, so I guess the only thing that I would mention, in addition to those changes that I sent you maybe a month ago, um, would be that there's a, that $2,000 increase um to the veterans' budget, which actually just level funds it from last year for special events. And that was recently requested by the Veterans Department.
So I, I would move to support the town budget as presented.
Okay, I'll second that.
Well, actually, so, sorry, um, Patrick needs to obtain from Youth and Family Services.
Oh, yes. How about that?
Okay.
So you can do all but that budget.
My, my motion will be to approve as presented excluding Youth and Family Services.
I'll second that.
Okay, any, any discussion? Okay, I just, before we take the vote, I just want to thank the, you know, Christie, um, Kim and the department heads and staff for, um, pulling together numbers, um, and particularly the work of the finance department and the finance team to pull together numbers in a very challenging, another very challenging year. Because if one wasn't enough, we now have, we've had another one. So, um, if no further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Um, Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Sean?
KEO, yes.
And Patrick?
Welch, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So 5005 being present, the motion passes. Um, I will now, um, entertain a motion to approve the budget for Westboro Youth and Family Services. As presented. And a second?
Second?
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote. Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Sean?
KEO, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes, on a vote of, so passing on a vote of 4 um, 0 with um, Patrick Welch uh recusing himself for potential conflict of interest. Okay.
And then you just need to vote your support of the articles.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to support Articles 1 through 29 on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Shelby?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ian. Shelby? Moves Johnson seconds, sorry, Marshall moves Johnson seconds. Any discussion or conversation or?
Can I just have a comment? Uh, Patrick had to stand up first. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Wait, you're mute. Patrick?
Sorry, my audio cut out there for a second. What was the motion again?
The motion is to support the Articles 1 through 29 on the annual town meeting warrant.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, now, just my, my comment is, is um, probably more to Sean and Patrick's do. I mean, we, we've typically, we would go through all these, like we, since we just did it when we went to the closing. But I'd say any selectman should feel free to call out individual ones if they don't want to, if they feel that they don't want to support it um from a vote, so. I'm not saying you have to, I'm just.
Right.
Good to know. Thank you, Ian.
So, so before, we, we've, we've got the motion and the second, but so before we vote, if there's anyone who wants to, um, exclude an article because they want to discuss support for the article or don't want to be part of unanimous vote on that article, um, I'll give you a second to look through really quickly. Just give me the numbers. Shelby?
I just want to make a comment that I, I think there's been a tremendous amount of work, um, as we've seen through many board meeting discussions on a number of articles. Um, in, in some ways, I feel like more than since I've been a board member. And I know that that can be tedious and I know it takes a lot of emails and back and forth and it makes sometimes our meetings seem longer than they should be, but this is, in my opinion, probably, well, it is the most important work that we do. And I think this board should be really proud and the prior board because it sort of led up to this one. Um, of the work that we've done and the warrant that we're putting forward. So I think it's really good, quality, thoughtful work and, um, I want to thank the board for that.
Excellent point. Thank you. Any other comments, questions or?
Sorry, I said I want to thank the board. I was including Christine and everyone, so sorry. Everyone that made this possible, departments, everyone. I apologize.
Okay, I'm not amended comment.
So you don't have to, the, you. So you don't have to vote, you just voted on the budget, so, and you, you don't have to vote on the town reports, so it's, would be Article three.
Three.
Article three through 29.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Okay, so the amended motion, is that fine with Shelby and Ian, is Articles three through 29 on the annual town meeting warrant?
Yep.
Yep.
I would agree.
Okay, so are there any articles that we don't want to vote in en masse?
I, I'm sorry, don't we have to vote, uh, Article two?
You just voted on the individual budgets?
Oh, okay, okay, sorry, sorry. Okay, yes, three through the, end of the
Three through 29.
Town meeting should be really short this year.
Okay, seeing no discussion or no identification of articles that require further discussion about our support, we'll move to a roll call vote. Um, Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Patrick?
Uh, Welch, yes.
Sean?
KEO, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. The, the board votes five, zero, zero to support Articles three through 29 on the annual to, town meeting warrant with five being present. I will take a breath.
Nice job, Alan.
Okay, we are here. So, um, next item on the agenda is, um, right of first refusal for 23 Spring Road. Kristy, do you have a quick comment on this for us? Because
Yeah, so, um, you, the board received a letter from the Open Space Committee, um, giving your, their position, uh, to not exercise your right of first refusal. Um, and then the board did, uh, review this in executive session, um, at the April 13th meeting, and, um, had voted to not exercise your right of first refusal, so, um, you know, previously, we had talked, we had also received a comment from the planning board, um, but your process has been really with the Open Space Committee. And, um, I did reach out to, uh, the town planner, and he said, you know, that that was, that they were fine if the board wanted to move forward, so. Um, it's a seven acre parcel, um, that they're proposing one house, or sorry, it's three, it's three parcels, um, equaling seven acres, they're proposing one house. Two of the parcels are in, uh, chapter, so that's before you.
Okay, so no, but no action is required on our part at this time?
Right, because you've already
Okay, so it's now part of the public record?
Correct.
Excellent. I like when agenda items go quickly. Okay, so next on the agenda are some committee, um, and board appointments. Um, the first is, um, Kent Anderson has requested appointment to one of the 11 open seats on the Cultural Council. Um, he has been in touch with the Chair of the Council to discuss its mission and scope of work. Um, the council appointments are for three years, and they do coincide with the fiscal year. So this would be an appointment, um, to fill a term to expire on June 30th, 2023. Um, so I have a motion to appoint Kent Anderson to the Cultural Council for a term to expire on June 30th, 2023.
Uh, this is Shelby, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussions, questions, or concerns?
Thank you, as always.
Yep, so we want to definitely thank Mr. Anderson for stepping forward and volunteering. Um, we appreciate his commitment to our community. Um, no further discussion, roll call vote. Uh, Ian?
Uh, Johnson, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Sean?
Uh, KEO, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So he's appointed on a vote of five, zero, zero, five being present. Um, at a, at our April 13th meeting, uh, Selectman KEO volunteered to be the alternate member of the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, AKA the CMRPC. This appointment's term is one year, expiring at the end of each fiscal year. So we would be, um, entertaining a motion to appoint Sean KEO as the alternate member of the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission for a term to expire on June 30th, 2021. And hopefully, in June, when we do reappointments, he'd be interested as well, unless something goes really, really wrong between now and then, so.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so moved by Selectman Johnson, a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Patrick Welch, for the second. Um, any questions or comments? And Sean, thank you for stepping into that role.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, roll call vote. Um, Sean?
Oh, do I refuse myself as the
No, you don't have to.
Okay, KEO, yes.
Excellent, Welch.
Welch, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
And Ian?
Johnson, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So Sean KEO is appointed as the alternate member of the CMRPC, a vote of five, zero, zero, five being present. Um, at that meeting, Sean also, um, same meeting, volunteered to be a liaison to the Senior Disabled Aid Committee. Um, it was discussed that the committees, they needed an additional sitting member for quorum. There's no stipulation that a board of sele, a select board member would be a, a member of that committee, so, um, Selectman KEO's appointment is as a resident, sitting on the committee. Um, the terms for the committee are indefinite, um, and there's still one more open seat for resident on the committee after this appointment, so. I will, um, I will entertain a motion to appoint Sean KEO to the Senior Disabled Taxation Aid Committee for an indefinite term.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second. Thank you, Shelby. And any discussions, questions, concerns? Thank you, Sean, for stepping up in that role as well, we appreciate it. Um, it's a lifetime appointment. Would be indefinite term, so, there you go. So roll call vote. Um, Ian?
Uh, Johnson, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Sean?
KEO, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So Sean KEO is appointed on a vote of five, zero, zero, five being present. Okay, next on the agenda item is the committee liaison, um, effort, um, committee appointments and liaison assignments, uh, that we discussed in our last, uh, message. There were a couple that we did not finalize action on because we had more than one people, more than one member of the select board interested. Um, so, as, as any great leader does, I, I put the kids in the room and said, figure it out, let me know what you decide. Um, and they had their conversations, and so, um, based on that, I can pull up the, just the spreadsheet people, so they can see it. I'll just make it bigger, and then I'll share it, just so as we're talking it through very quickly. You can see. Okay, so the Okay. So the first, um, position that we had, um, more than one member interested in was the, uh, Board's representative on the Economic Development Committee. Um, after discussion, um, I heard back that, um, Sean will volunteer and, and is willing to volunteer and step into that seat. Um, Shelby was also interested, will, um, you know, be involved and, and supportive and participate and assist as needed. Um, so I will, and I believe this appointment, so I'm currently in that seat, and I have not officially yet resigned. So I believe that this appointment would take effect, Kristy, correct me if I'm wrong, or Kim, it would take effect July 1st with the fiscal year, for the upcoming year, or should I, should I quickly resign and make it now? Wait, you're muted, Kristy. Sorry.
So you're the selectman's appointment, so you can, if you're, if you choose to appoint someone else, then you can do that immediately.
Okay, Sean, you ready to step in immediately?
Um, sure, whenever you're ready to step down.
Okay, then I think we'll, I think we'll, um, just given my other time commitments, um, and my role as Chair, we'll do that sooner rather than later. Um, so I will entertain a motion to appoint Sean KEO as the Selectman's representative on the Economic Development Committee.
So moved.
Moved by Shelby.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Um, Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Sean?
KEO, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So five, zero, zero is the vote affirming that appointment, five being present. The second position was the Board of Selectmen's representation on Sustainable Westboro. Um, I will scroll down, so it's in the center of the screen, and Patrick has stepped forward to, um, agree to fill that seat. So I will entertain a motion to, uh, move to appoint Patrick Welch as the Selectman's representative on Sustainable Westboro.
So moved.
And a second?
Second, second, Marshall, second.
Okay. Okay, any discussions? Okay, hearing none. Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Sean?
KEO, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. So Patrick is appointed on a vote of five, zero, zero, five being present. The last was the liaison position to the Council on Aging. And again, Patrick has agreed to step up and fill that role, so I'll entertain a motion to, um, assign Patrick, we actually didn't Okay, I'm reading the, the draft motion. We, we did not vote to assign liaison positions in the past.
No, you don't need to.
Okay, so Patrick, you're the liaison.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you very much for agreeing to step up and
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to stop presenting. Okay. Okay, um, with that being concluded, um, thank everyone very much for stepping up and volunteering. We have three sets of minutes to, um, approve. So entertain a motion for the March 1st minutes.
So moved.
And a second?
Marshall?
Thank you. Any comments, questions, or notations? Seeing none, roll
That one, it's nice and easy.
Yeah, excellent. Seeing none, roll call vote. Shelby?
Uh, Marshall, yes.
Sean?
Uh, KEO, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Myself, yes. So those minutes are approved, five, zero, zero. Next are the March 4th minutes.
I'll move their acceptance as presented.
Okay, so moved, and second?
Second.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, any discussions, comments, changes, edits? Seeing none, roll call vote. Shelby?
Uh, Marshall, yes.
Sean?
KEO, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. Those minutes are approved, five, zero, zero, five being present. And finally, March 9th minutes?
I'll move the March 9th min, minutes as presented.
So moved.
Okay, so that's a second from Patrick?
Sorry, yep, second.
Awesome. Any changes, edits, corrections, comments, concerns? Seeing none, roll call vote. Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Sean?
KEO, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. Those minutes are approved on a vote of five, zero, zero. So, um, last item on our agenda before we head into executive session is, um, issues and correspondence. Okay? And no one's got their hand raised, so, but Ian's unmuted, so Ian, do you have anything?
No, but for being 10:03, I will, uh, pass my time on to someone else. I have nothing to update tonight.
Okay, Sean?
Nope, I'm good, thank you very much.
Patrick? Patrick passes, and Shelby?
I'll just thank Westboro TV for their coverage and, um, bringing us live to our viewing audiences still up at town, great.
Good, thank you, and I have nothing this evening as well. Okay, on that note, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session. Ian, do you have that?
Yeah, I guess, um, I was just looking at it, because I think, I guess there's a couple of things there. Kristy, we still have things for executive session. I don't think the real estate, there's any real updates, so.
Um, well, Spring Road, we wouldn't need to speak to, to an executive session, because you just had that discussion. And then, I, I mean, we could potentially postpone the Zero Ruggles and the, yeah, I mean, we could go into executive session for Zero Ruggles and litigation, um, or we could wait till the next meeting. Given the hour.
What do folks want?
I'm calling it away.
Um, I'm here.
I'll move that we enter into executive discussion, discuss strategy with respect to litigation, to consider the purchase exchange lease or vi, value of real estate at Zero Ruggles Street.
Is there a second?
Stay full second.
Okay, roll call vote. Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Sean?
KEO, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Edinburgh, yes. So we will adjourn to executive session. The Chair determines that, um, discussion of these items, the litigation and the real estate would be detrimental to the town's negotiating position and, and legal strategy. We will not be reconvening in open meeting. Thank you very much, Westboro TV, and thank you, folks, for watching.